Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Lakewood City Council's special meeting with the Lakewood Water District Board, if I can put the microphone up so it doesn't completely sound like I'm in a hole. So this is a really nice opportunity for all of us to get together. Since it is a public meeting, we go ahead and do a roll call. And then the importance of the opportunity to meet together is to kind of exchange ideas about issues of of interest to each of the organizations, most of which are common interests for all of us. But before we get to the items for discussion, we'll go ahead and we'll start with our Bert to call our role, and then if you guys do something similar, Mr. Black, that would be great as well.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter. Councilmember Lorisella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a forum.
Thank you. And then Lakewood Water District wants to do similarly.
John Korsmull Jr. and President of Lakewood Water District.
Greg Riedeski, Commissioner, Lakewood Water District, ladies and president.
Gary Barson, Lakewood Water District, Secretary.
Very good. The gang's all here and Mr. Black, Superintendent. So the funky thing about the microphones here is if there are more than three that are lit red, it tends to echo. So I will try to turn mine off and I'm not speaking so that you guys can speak without a massive echo and likewise. So what we hope to do within the hour that we have together is to kind of go through the items for discussion and rather than going down in the order that are listed there, one through eight, we'll kind of take one on the city list and then we'll bounce over to the Lakewood Water District list and kind of go back and forth. That way everyone gets a fair chance to fully and fairly chat about their particular issues and we don't have to take them in any particular order. So the first one from our perspective is the issue of PFAS. We've received public comments from some well-meaning commenters about concerns with the quality of the water. And so we thought we would bring it up and have you folks give us kind of an update on your efforts with PFAS and the existence of water and obviously the clarity and cleanliness of the water so people can be at ease with regard to that issue here in Lakewood. So I'll let you go ahead and give us the update.
Yeah. Okay, I'll go ahead and just start us off. One thing that Lakewood Water District has is tried very hard to be very transparent on this issue of the contaminants and specifically PFOW and PFOS. And so lately, it's been a big concentration of ours. And we are also, as you might know, in the middle of a lawsuit with the Department of Defense, federal government, and with the suppliers of this material, this PFOW and PFOS chemical. But Randy really has a lot more detail, and I know we only have a certain amount of time to talk about each subject. So I think we brought a little bit of a few slides to share with you on to help to get through this one category.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Korsnall. Again, I'm Randy Black, General Manager for Lakewood Water District, and I think it's important if we just started a little bit with the history of PFAS so that you have a better context of really what we are dealing with. So there are over 4,000 chain of PFAS chemicals, short and long chain. The two that we have found in our sources is PFOA and PFOS. So prior to June of 2022, the EPA's lifetime health advisory was 70 parts per trillion. And we'll talk a little bit more of what that means. Currently, right now, there's what they call the state action level, which is an acronym of SAW. And so under that, we have four wells that are affected from the SAW level. They are the, we're also looking at projects for 2023, which is a new well at Scotts G4 over by the Lakewood Library, just to give you a context where that is. And then that's the K well, and then the G4 well is over by the Scotts well site on 108th and Lakeview, that new site that we have there. We're also looking at Oak Brook O2 replacement well and then Hipkins Road replacement well. So for projects for 2024, we're looking at the replacement well for O3 and then Country Place U1. So here's a good way of looking at what we were dealing with. So under the lifetime health advisory, you can see that there are only two chemicals that was being regulated at the time, PFOA, PFOS. Under the SAW level, it dropped from 30 parts per trillion down to 10 parts per trillion for PFOA and for the PFOS, it went from 30 to 15, and then they added four other chemicals. Now, under the MCL, which just came out, that's being proposed by EPA, they're going down to four parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS of four parts. And then plus they are the other chemicals that are being regulated as well. Let me go to the next slide. So here's the wells that are impacted. So as you can see, you can see in the blue are the wells that we have already added treatment to. And then under the SAW level, we have those wells that are identified in red that are there. And if we can hit the button again, we should, and then here's the wells that would be impacted through the MCL. So we went from four under the SAW level now to an additional four under the MCL for the EPA. And those are J3, J2, and then there's the E wells over off of Washington Boulevard, the D wells over by the corporate office for the district. So those are the four additional wells that are impacted by the EMCL level. So here's the complications that we're running into with the situation. One is that the district is planning for right now as the way that the proposed rule stands. There's a timing issue because right now EPA is saying that you have three years to mitigate the the issue of PFAS. However, in the state of Washington, they have a primacy agreement with EPA that could grant up to two more years on a case-by-case basis. The final MCL, we don't know when that will be actually enacted because the EPA received over 1,000 comments with regard to the proposed rule. So you know, how they go through and sift through those comments that are made remains to be seen. From our supply standpoint versus sources, we would be down, if it stays the way it is right now, we'd be down about 3.1 million gallons a day. And that's affecting D3, E3, and the J wells. With the SAW level, we're already down 4 million gallons from the four wells that are off. So combined total would be 7.1 million gallons a day, which is a significant hit to our supply. The problems with the MCL that the state has is that, or that the EPA is proposing, is that they've only taken a very small amount of a sampling of PFAS throughout the country. So one of the things under the Safe Drinking Water Act that is important, and one of the things that we commented to the EPA was that we're just completing taking what they call unregulated maximum containment levels for a broader suite, which was what they call is M U R C 5. It's the fifth time under the Safe Drinking Water Act that we take this suite of chemicals. So every year, there's a new set of chemicals that the EPA requires that you test for. Now, there is going to be over 260,000 sample data coming in that we're encouraging the EPA to wait and look at and see how much and how wide of extensive problem is this? Right now, they've only got about a little over 160 samples of it, which is, you know, pale in comparison when you really look at what's kind of coming in here shortly. We're also strapped with, there's only four manufacturers in the country that builds GAC system, which is granular activated carbon. So if you can just imagine, if this proliferates into a broader impact across the country with only five manufacturers in the greater North America, you're now running into supply and demand issues. And so we think that that's something that the EPA needs to consider when we look at this. So from our standpoint, what we presented to the board when we sent this to them back in June 1st, we can't necessarily wait to have a decision made on those. We really have to act now and going forward, as if the rule will go in as it's being proposed. Next slide.
Just add also that I think, you know, when we started having, when we're testing monthly now for PFOW and PFOS, and when they started showing up, we went ahead and made the decision to shut those wells down. And then we've added two treatment facilities to two of our sites now that are taking those chemicals out of the water supply. So, I mean, for your purposes and talking to the city of Lakewood, you know, residents, the water is safe to drink. So I mean, we're making sure that we're either shutting those wells off or we're treating the water. And then going forward and you know, our plan here for the 2023 going forward is to continue to possibly go for additional wells and new well sites to go to different locations and different depths and different aquifers, and then also to treat. And then treating is expensive and it's got a longer sustainability cost to it.
Are you folks able to recover some of that through hopefully the litigation you're pursuing?
I mean, that's ultimately where we would hope that we would gain the latest news as of last Thursday. So of all the cases around the country, there is a consolidation court in South Carolina, Judge Gergels Court, where over 1,400 of these litigation cases for PFAS are sitting. So they're doing five bellwether cases. The one case that directly relates to our situation was supposed to start on June 5th. 3M, which is the largest manufacturer of perforated alkali substances, is tentatively looking at a settlement of $10.6 billion on this issue. My personal opinion is it's not enough. If you add another zero to that, I think we're getting to what it really may end up costing. So that's encouraging. And so, you know, whether we continue to have to search for ways that we continue to pay for this remains to be seen if that settlement goes forward. We can go to the next slide here, as I think this. So one of the sites that is immediate known to us as far as what we can do here, some of you would recognize Country Place off of Lakewood Drive over by Flett Dairy Property. That is a site that we know that we can't drill any deeper. And so treatment is our only option at that site. That's a 900 gallon a minute well. And however, that's a $4.5 million cost at today's dollars for that site. Next slide, the other site that we already.
That's the capital cost. And then we have the maintenance on top of it. So when you look at the possibility of moving down the MCL at four, MCL at four parts per trillion, we are going to have to replace the granular activated carbon sooner than, say, under the SAW, which was at 15 parts per trillion. So the gods are truly conspiring against us in terms of costs. So, yeah.
And so this site here is 88th and Pine over by Wards Lake, give you a location off of Pine 88th Street and Pine. This site, we already know, we've tried to drill deeper there, tried to get into the deep aquifer, we couldn't find it. And so there actually is three wells. One of the wells that's there has hydrogen sulfide in it, and so that smells like burnt eggs when you actually have the water coming out of the well. However, with adding GAC system to this site, we now can utilize that water because it would go through the activated carbon and we would add a little chlorine to it, which the chlorine causes the hydrogen sulfide to oxidize against the GAC media. And so we actually gain about 680 gallons per minute out of that site. So these were the two sites that we suggested to the board that we immediately go out and do financing for, that they offer the quickest turnaround for adding more sources to our supply so that we continue to meet our demand. So you can go to the next slide. So this breaks down our capital costs. So the capital program that we were looking at when we were just meeting the SAW level was 19.69 million. However, under the capital program that we need now for the MCL, if it stays the way it is and at the levels that it is, we jumped another $11 million to 31 million and 86. So this is how we have proposed to the board about breaking out that cost over time, assuming that we get the two years under the primacy rights of the state. But what we proposed is to take advantage of the Public Works Board low-interest loans and ask the board approval to go out for $10 million so that we can get those two projects I showed you earlier on as soon as we possibly can. So the board did approve the recommendation on that. So last slide, I think it is. So here is what we've been doing. We've been trying and then we've been very successful on grant funding for G4, K3. Senator Murray's office has been our staunch advocate for. We got 1.9 million through the Director Appropriations Committee. We also have been awarded Drinking Water Revolving Fund money for I3 and O2. So that money's available. And then obviously with the Public Works Loan, we would then be able to do Country Place Navy and Pine for those other projects. And of course, the interest rate under the Public Works Board loan is 1.72%, which is very low for now. So all these are hoping that we're looking at as helping us be able to reduce the financial impact to our rate bears. That is of the utmost concern of the board. We're going to continue to look for that. We did approach Representative Strickland, and she has got us in for $5 million through her district, which we are, you know, obviously members of. But we also to hope to get through the DCCA money. We didn't get the full 3.86 million. We only got 1.86 million. So they said that they were going to champion at the supplemental budget this year in 2023, of the hopes of trying to get that in 2024. So that would give us another $7 million to help us against the remaining costs that we would have to face. So we're really working steadfast to try to minimize those impacts.
Open to questions? Thank you, Mr. Black, Mr. Anderson, and then Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you. My question relates to the science behind the risk. Well, personally, 40 years ago, I was exposed to that stuff a few times. So and so that explains a lot, yeah. In many environmental contamination cases, the health risk is is evaluated and then the standards are tightened on numerous occasions based on computer extrapolations. With respect to going forward and where those regulatory levels might be, you know, whether the studies regarding the very real health risks of these chemicals were clinical or are they working on these computer models based off minimal, relatively minimal data with respect to real patients?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Anderson is right on with that because there are really, the only data that really has been collected has been on animals right now on the results of the different levels of exposure at parts per trillion. So the real science behind it is still evolving. I think that that's why you see states like in our state sitting at 10 and 15 or looking at Colorado, which is 20 and 20. And then you look at New Jersey, who set an MCL of six and eight. Why is it so all over the place with regard to those levels? And it goes back to your point. There hasn't been yet the modeling of science and the modeling of actual the results based on human consumption.
Mr. Branstadter?
You mentioned that over time, depending on how things go, and some wells have to be shut down then, and you lose in the millions of gallons. That do you see that loss of water not in the timeline going with how your mitigation efforts go to be able to bring new wells or bring older wells back online? Impacting residents or businesses in the city in terms of the availability of water that is pretty well unrestricted right now. Are you going to have to do something in terms of rationing if it gets as bad as you envisioned it might?
So that was the driver for the decision-making process that we presented to the board. So right now, good business management practices is that you don't typically want to run any well over 20 hours in a day. So everything that we've shared with the board has been driven to that number is avoiding driving our wells more than 20 hours a day and pumping so they can rest. And so that's why the critical path here was presented to the board that we need to act now and assuming that the EPA does in fact go with the four parts per trillion. If it changes, then we can adjust and push our timelines accordingly. But if it stays the same, given the logistics, the supply chain issues, and the time it takes to bring the site, our Scotts well site over by the railroad tracks on 108th and Lakeview, from the time that we started the consultant working to the time that it went operational took us 32 months. And so that's a long time. And so if we, if right now, we are in a good place. We don't have that issue. But if the EPA acts with that MCL and the board has already adopted a policy, we will not run any well that violates any MCL or SAW level, then we would be a little bit different situation going forward if that was the case. But with this process that we've outlined and shaping these decisions the way the board has, we should not have any problem. It should continue as is right now for our city here and our wholesale customers as well.
If it came to that, the strategy in addition to telling users to use less water, okay, would it restrict your business of selling water to other purveyors?
Yeah, so everybody shares in the same, whether it's here in the city of Lakewood or wholesale partners, everybody is treated the same way.
Great. Well, lots of good information. And in the interest of time, because we could probably be here all night just with you folks, because it's really helpful and important information. But we have a few other important items to go through. And so in fairness, we're going to bounce to your topics of interest. So we can go to that and then we'll go back to the city's topic. And the first one, I understand, that was on your list for discussion was the franchise agreement. And so this is one that we're probably not going to come to a great conclusion today, but what I thought would be helpful for our council to hear was your perspective on the franchise agreement, because we know it's up for review and I guess reconsideration negotiation after December 26, 2026, which is when it runs through. And so we're just open to hear the perspective. So the council, not all of us may be here by 2026, but it's important to hear the perspective as to how things have been going. We have heard from our side. And I open it up for you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think the franchise agreement is going along fairly well. I think we're happy with it. And I think, you know, based on what I know, we have a couple of five-year extensions that would come up and, you know, knowing what we know, we just move forward on those. But there was a few things that came up that we just wanted to make sure that we had an understanding about. And again, I'll just transition over to our general manager, Randy, to talk specifically, I think, about a couple of items that came up with. Randy, I'll let you explain.
Yeah, I think that going forward, we obviously would like to have some clarity with regard to the utilities that are in the right of way and especially when it relates to a city project. I know that the city and the district has two different views of that. And probably clarifying, it would be a good idea going forward at some point during the next renewal in 2026. I think from one of the things I want to acknowledge is the city has worked very hard, especially in the public works arena and the engineering, to try to avoid having to replace or have us reroute our infrastructure. And the best way I've tried to share this with the board, all that works is that when you put in infrastructure and you cut it and you reroute it or you move it to a different location, you shorten the life expectancy on that asset. And so that's why in the original portion of the franchise agreement, this is what we really wanted to see the city do. And and for the most part, the city has really tried really hard to make sure that that wasn't an issue. And so I think it's just something that we feel that it'd be important to have that discussion when the renewal comes up, just to really have the language. And we work with Heidi Walker, the council for the city, and and I think she would agree that there is value in trying to hew out and hone in on really the language that best fits the intention of both agencies in going forward.
Very good. Any other comments or questions on that before we proceed to the next one? And I'm going to try to combine a couple of these in the sense of time. You know, as you may know, the legislature passed some recent legislation that imposed greater housing density mandates for cities and towns in the state. And so for a city like Lakewood, residential properties are mandated now to allow to two accessory dwelling units on each single-family lot and two units on every single-family residential lot. So it's becoming an interesting play. The other thing we're required to plan for, we're sitting now 64,000 some residents and we're to plan for 83,000 by a 2040 or 2030 by, something like that, 2040, I believe, is the target. Be that as it may, that's a lot of extra residents, a lot of extra water availability letters, a lot of issues for all of us to grapple with. And this kind of ties into the other common issues of interest. How can we coordinate better on grant funding opportunities? How does it work with transportation improvement funds? There's some comments in our materials that it's difficult, if not impossible, for transportation grants to include an allocation for utility or, you know, removal or replacement of utilities within the transportation project. So, you know, we throw it out there in terms of, we just heard some of the restrictions potentially on water availability if some of these things come to pass. And then we've got on top of that increasing population mandates for more housing. What's your best guess, Mr. Black, and how we're going to make it all work?
Well, so far, we've been planning at about 1% growth per year for the city. And so far that, you know, the city has not really had that high a growth in a particular year. So right now, even taking 1% of growth going out, we are good till 2043 as is. So um, again, if we're looking at housing units and we're looking at smaller units. Um, obviously, we would consider those to be less of a demand on the system because they're smaller units. And so they would not have like. The need to water grass, or they wouldn't have the need for other usages that a home residential homeowner would have. And so. Part of what we're going to be doing is, right now, the board has already authorized a rate study. And in that rate study is, is also a part is a customer classification process. So we're gonna be looking at our rates to see. How they uh, under equal justice, how do they look to everybody? And how do they, how does our rate stack up with? Uh, those below. The poverty level. Those folks that are in fixed income, multifamily, commercial and so forth. So. Um, that information will be presented to the board later on this year. But um, so we look forward to that information. And so part of what we'll do is we'll take what the city. Has been mandated for, for growth and then add that into the scenario and then relook at our numbers to see if there's anything that we think. Stands out that, that would take us to a different direction.
And, and on that, one of the things that. We're looking to do and we're asking the Pierce County Sewer Utility to consider, think about, and me, it's an open discussion item. For the Water District. Is the. The connection charges for potentially ADUs, right? And we're really. Under some mandate to increase housing density. And there's an equity component. That comes with providing. Housing that might meet the needs of lower-income families. One of those opportunities is through ADUs. So the question is, is there some capacity to consider? As part of. Our global thinking. A reduction or a waiver of those uh, connection charges for an ADU when you've got an existing single-family residence on that lot?
Yeah, so um, I think this is, you know, an area where the collaboration with the city and the Lakewood Water District is, you know, perfect. And, and. Certainly, we would look into that. I think there's some efficiencies there, as Randy talked about with. Um, some of these ADUs that um, will be coming in. You know, they're not gonna be using that amount of water. And so we can take a look at those types of. Um, you know what that would mean for connection charges and, and we're, we're still learning as you are, you know, with this legislation, this recent legislation is, is um. Taking effect and how we're gonna work through some of this. But the collaboration with the city would be perfect on this in terms of. Um, you know, if there is a different funding or grants or potential areas available to work through. Um, but one of the things that we could certainly look at is, is um. You know, take a look at our rates and then the connection fees as well. So we're open to that. And I think. There was some discussion that we had specifically on. You know, whether. Um, it should be ratepayers paying for this or who to pay this. And commissioners had a little bit of. Conversation around that. I don't know if there's any comment there. Gary, did you wanna? Make a comment?
Yeah, I guess the comment is, you know, uh, w- w- we have, we answer to the ratepayers. And so. It's, it, this is an issue, I feels to some extent that the ratepayers have to support. Us and because the uh. They may be taking, paying for part of this. For these uh, ADU connections. If, if we move ahead and waive some of the connection fees or reduce them. Um, they're, they're just fixed, some fixed costs. As far as the meters. You know, the, they're, the, all the meters cost pretty much the same amount of money. Uh, s- s- so there's, there's investments there. Um, so just. It's, it's a bit of a two-way street. Because we do answer to the ratepayers and, and so we have to be careful that we're not gifting public money. And, and those sorts of things. So, but we, you know. Wh- like John said, we will sit down and see what we can work out.
That's a great point, because and I'm not an engineer, nor do I play one on TV, but. You know, one wonders whether you have to have a separate meter or whether you can have one meter to the main house and just have a, a plumber with approval. And a backflow assembler, whatever it takes to make sure that they can cut that supply off over into. An ADU. So that might accommodate some of that on our end, on the building permitting side. And your end on the capacity side.
The only concern would be is that if. They are paying rent or they're paying for that ADU. If the property owner, in the example that you just presented, if you were to use the, the, the existing residential meter. And then you had it, you know, tapped in and sent over to the ADU. If the residential. Customer did not pay their bill and turned them off, you would be turning off all the ADUs and subsequent to it. So that's, that's where the meters really. Uh, now, if you had a. Uh, another example, when I'm starting to hear a little bit more about what's happening in other cities is that they're using a common meter, but it's already dedicated towards. A funding source that pays for that water. Common to all the ADUs there. So like a homeowners association, right? So. The homeowners association pays for the water bill itself or all of the condo association or, or whatever. So I'm, I'm hearing there's some. Um. Examples of where that might come in. But if you're just looking at a residential person who has a meter and he's gonna add a couple of ADUs to that. You, you're. Going to have a problem. With, if the resident doesn't pay the water bill, then you're shutting everybody off. And plus you have to have a backflow.
Or, or it's a homeowner itself that has ADUs, right?
Correct.
Maybe become the landlord tenant issue potentially. Yeah, Mr. Bo, can you have a question?
Yeah, I just kind of add to this discussion and, and, and what's being faced. We have the Growth Management Act and, and, and that, and we have the population take, which says eighty-four thousand or eighty-five thousand people. The state has now layered on a. And, and they actually came in with their own housing tool, based on housing units. They call it the HAP tool. It actually, we have now have less units we need to build. But um. It's. It also requires it. By income levels. So there has to be a certain amount of emergency housing. There has to be a certain amount of housing below thirty percent AMI. Sixty, eighty, whatever the cutoffs are. And, and so when we talk about uh. Connection charge waivers or, and there's different ways to help fund those connection charges because uh, the, the, the county has, has something similar. Realize that we can, we can start probably directing it towards that lower end, right? The emergency housing and to various things like that, they're gonna have to be built. So you. You can't just hit your number and, and hope for the best. It has to be hitting your number now in certain different target areas. Um, nobody knows how to do it yet, right? And, and so um, everyone, the cities are really trying to figure this out. So hopefully there'll be some examples. Coming up. So I'll, I'll just. Well, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
The conundrum gets ever more complicated, right? So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Corzmo, for your next sort of uh. Topic of interest that you wanna present?
Right, um, it was item number seven, uh, in the back page. Uh, talks to. Title pavement degradation change charges. And so as we work through uh, a lot of projects, and I know that basically. The Lakewood Water District, probably along with um, Puget Sound Energy and a few of the other utilities. Are doing um, you know, a number of projects within the city and, and uh, you know, with each one of those projects are permitting. And there's um. Everything to be considered. As we're working through the right of way or working through the streets of Lakewood. One thing that's come up for us um, is as we're budgeting these projects. We get a pretty good idea of the cost of permitting and what's gonna be required. Of the, you know, of our construction within the city. But those have been very inconsistent. And so it's really hard for us to budget something. When we're being told um, a cost is, you know, maybe twenty thousand dollars, for example. And uh, we find out, once we get the permit and start construction, that it's actually forty thousand. And, you know, we start the project, you know, just like everyone loves over budget, right? You know, so. Um, we're just trying to figure out if there's a way to, to uh, work together a little closer on some of these things since, you know. We have obviously several projects ongoing, you know, every year here within the city. And. Randy, I'm not sure if I described that exactly perfect, but uh, if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, I think if, if we could. Um. Be recipients of the formula in a way that. The paper degradation fee is calculated so that we could. Forecast what that cost would be ahead when we do our projects or budgeting, that would be very helpful versus. Getting the projects, going for permit and then finding out what that degradation. Total cost would be, would be very beneficial. That would be an important piece for us. If we could have the formula, figure out how the. Rating is for the uh, the area on the um, roadway. That would be very helpful for us internally.
I think Mr. Coffield can speak to that or Mr. Anderson, because I think we're happy to.
Yeah, that was, that was my, my point, because I thought it was fairly well defined. It's whether you have the facts or not with respect to that particular roadway. The facts principally being the age condition of the pavement and the location of. Where you're gonna cut.
That's correct, Councilmember Anderson. The cost is based on the. The um. Age of the road and the condition and such. So a road that was. Built in the last four to five years is gonna have a much lower payment to degradation cost than, for example. Like your project over on Lake Stilicum Road earlier or last year through that neighborhood, it was probably a higher cost. Than it would be in a road that was built in the last, again, five or six years. And the, the council, you know, y- y- when you put this policy in place, you also maintained a no-cut rule for five years as well. Um, again, the purpose of the pavement degradation cost is because. Once utility, it's usually utility cuts into the road, it reduces the life and the value of that road. And so these monies. That are collected are put into our CIP to be able to, in the future, be able to fund that um, loss of life, if you will, over, over the years of, of that road. Also, um. The um. The, and this is across all utilities, whether it's the Water District, whether it's the Sewer District. Comcast, Puget Sound Energy, TPU. Um, we've had this in place for six years. And we've collected a little over two hundred thousand dollars. So we're averaging across all of our utilities. Uh, about forty to forty-five thousand dollars a year um, in terms of, in terms of collections. So um, and then there's probably gonna be some. Projects where I understand there hasn't been a pavement degradation fee. I think actually, um, the most recent example was um. Puget Sound Energy upgrading their gas main on ri- on Bridgeport. But certainly if uh, your staff have questions, I, I know my staff would be more than happy to sit down with you and walk you through the calculation and get that over to you.
I, I think we would all hope as neighbors, right, and ratepayers and taxpayers. That for most of the new projects, I think we've. Done a pretty good job collectively of coordinating on all the new arterial projects and everything else. Because the degradation step comes in when we've done a project. And then someone wants to open it up. And that's the biggest boo-boo really that we want to avoid, right? And that doesn't seem like it's happening that much anymore, because we're really working collaboratively on. Projects like quarter by quarter, year in advance or so.
Yeah, I, I would agree that we've got a great relationship with the uh, engineering department and the public work side of things here for that. Um, and I think that. That's the exact problem is that. The city comes in, it does a new road and then, you know, all of a sudden, somebody comes back and says, oh, by the way, we need to upgrade a new gas line or something like that. And so. We understand the reasons for the pavement degradation fee and those things that are there. I think for us, if we had the formula and we knew. How the roads are rated. And so then we could do the, the math ourselves. That would be wonderful, be able to have that information. So. I think I'll take John up on this, on this offer.
You know, again, it seems like that might be as simple as also maybe having a little pre-app meeting like we do with so many other. Developers in the city and just say, hey, we're doing this project. Can we have a fifteen-minute call or meeting just to double-check how we would estimate that portion of the cost? I think we'd be happy to do that. I think, right, Mr. Coffield? Yeah. Cool. On that. John, did you have another one? You want to talk about the Cross Connection Program is something that. We've all been chatting about over the years.
Yeah, so the, the Cross Connection Troll Program, um, as the council may be aware, is the local plumbing authority. And under RCW statute. Um, the, the primary water uh, authority or plumbing authority is responsible for in-premise. Backflow protection. So. In other words, if, uh, give you an example, what in-premise means is like. At a McDonald's restaurant, they have a soda machine inside. And so typically on a soda machine, that's required a backflow device, an RP device on that equipment. That's usually the plumbing authority calls that out. The district. Is uh, set up for what we call premise isolation. Which means at the meter, if it was a um. Laundry mat going in, we would then require a backflow device at the meter. And then anything else inside the building would be uh, an obligation of the plumbing authority. So we have been doing both in-premise and premise isolation for some time. And the, the last time. That we sat down with the council and, and talked about this, we have an agreement in place that allows us to be reimbursed for our costs. At some point, has a city thought about taking over that program? And doing the in-premise isolation. Yeah, yourselves. And um, certainly we would like to see that if that happens. Um, and was just wondering if it's been considered or if there's a plan to eventually take over. Uh, that part of the program.
I think Mr. Coffield can speak to it, but from my understanding, there's not been uh, a, a uh. A plethora of clamoring voices to take that over. Uh, as you might imagine. And. Hmm, i- it could be an expertise issue, it could be a budgetary issue, we're just not set up for it. Uh, and here's an interesting question. So in-premise versus out, right? So outside would be like a sprinkler uh, system in a home. So you got the backflow assembly, that would be something under your purview, right? And then if you had a boiler like I do in my basement that does this hot water thing for the floor, that's an in-premises one. But the one guy comes out and nicks me the ninety-five dollars per inspection. But he, he's a one-stop shop. He comes and he does both at the same time. So that's an example. Personal to me of an economy and scale where one guy under the purview of you folks or perhaps the city, but best with you folks. Is doing it and then sending in the forms, remitting the fee or whatever he's doing. So to me, and I'm just one of uh, seven. That seems to be the better course of action from our perspective. And it may be an issue of cost for you. And so that's something we can talk about. If it's a, if, if you're suffering a greater cost. Than the current allocation through the um. Agreement that we have, that's something for us to consider at the next biennial budget.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of that um. Uh, Mayor, and, and I think the other part is just the step, the authority. For the district to call it out. I'm, I am concerned and I have not talked to our general counsel about that, but. You have basically, in essence, given us your authority to call out backflow devices. And I'm, I'm not. I'm not sure if. We've covered all our bases on that. So um. And that's where our staff gets concerned because they, they go out and they call out a backflow device and.
And the in-premise one, right?
And in-premise one, correct. And so um. They're concerned and they've voiced it that. Do we really have the authority, Randy, to make this and turn them off? Or if there is an, an action, say. Uh, li- litigation concerning something that happened. Are we more liable than the city because we're taking over a function of the city? I, I, I don't have that answer. Here, I, I just think it's worth. Looking into. And then I do think that they. The cost is certainly gone up since we first did this agreement about six, seven years ago.
Well, given uh, good legal beagles on both sides of the fence, there's got to be in the next MOU some proper allocation of authority, legal authority to do the in-premises work that seems to be possibly a fix that they can look at or work on. I would think. Mr. Coffield, do you have a thought on that?
Thank you, Mayor Whelan. Um, so first of all, I just want to say the city is very, very pleased with how Lakewood Water District is handling. Backflow devices. And the reason being is because you've been doing it. For a long, long time. You were doing it for decades prior to the city incorporated. You've been doing it since then. Um, you know, a comment was made earlier, I think it was Commissioner Barton about, you know, the use of ratepayer dollars. Well, the same thing. Um, you know, a comment was made earlier, I think it was Commissioner Barton about, you know, the use of ratepayer dollars, while the same thing on the city, the use of taxpayer dollars for. Water utility purposes, however, the city has recognized perhaps we do have a role there, and that's why we entered into that ILA. About five or six years ago, and actually that annual compensation um. Uh, within the ILA is, you know, it does adjust for inflation. Um, but certainly if, you know, you have updated costs associated with that, I would say the city would be open to looking into that. Um, I would also say just from a capacity standpoint, that the city, our Community and Economic Development Department, um. Which, you you know, they're just overwhelmed with these new state mandates, so if the mayor and the council come to me and ask me, can we take this off over? I'm just gonna say no, because we simply don't have the capa- the capacity to do it. Never mind the expertise, and again, you folks are doing a fantastic job there. Um, but again, if there's an issue with the financing and we're not paying our fair share commensurate with the agreement, I think that's something that we should take a look at.
It's the financing and the liability delegation to cross the Ts and dot the Is, it sounds like. On that, that's something that's fixable, I would think. That, and just by way of curiosity, you folks, you you give out the list of qualified backflow inspectors, and so you don't really have people on staff that are doing that. You have people out in the community that are properly licensed to do it, and then they communicate back. And provide the documentation, so it really is administrative tasks that you guys are performing.
Yeah, that's correct, we require licensing to be shown that they are an approved backflow assembly tester. And they have insurances and Ellen I call um uh certificates for that purpose of of testing and and uh. And we require the insurance coverages as well for them, so. Um, yeah, and then that's just part of what our obligation is, whether it was, whether whether we're doing both or we're doing just one, so that continues.
Very good, well, that was a helpful conversation, so back to. Our piece here. So we had a small little question that we received periodically over the years about fluoridation in the water. And I know we don't do that here, there was some predating me, some conversation by citizens, I think way back when. About supporting fluoridation in waters, or some technical or. Policy reason that we don't do that here in Lakewood?
So not to go back and have a a long conversation about it, uh, so back in two thousand and six. Uh, when the matter first came up, the board weighed the issue of fluoridation and and of course went to an advisory. Vote that happened and it was. What the slightly of of favor of of providing fluoridation. The the couple of issues that we had, number one was is that the wholesale partners. Um, didn't get a vote in and they were very um staunch opposing of adding fluoride to the water. That they would receive, so um the board took that into consideration. Uh, as part of the decision process, and second of all was the the cost factor, so at that time in two thousand and six. Uh, the estimated cost for adding fluoride to Lakewood Water District System was three point five million dollars. Um, the, excuse me, Dental Association was willing to give the district a million dollars. And so um I do not have any idea right now what that cost would be at today's dollars. You know, uh, sometime later, so. The other issue is is that quite frankly, and to be very honest, right now PFAS is our utmost concern. And everything that we are, as you can see. Um, is focused on making sure that we can. Meet our supply and demand forecast that we have, so. Um, certainly, not speaking for the board here, but certainly something that could be taken up later on. Uh, but I would say at this point in time, uh, Mayor Whalen, that. Uh, the district is, doesn't have the bandwidth right now to take something like that on and and given where we are at PFAS.
Maybe if we raise the charge slightly on the backflow assemblies, it could cover the cost of the fluoride. Mr. Anderson?
Well, I I certainly hope you keep that on your radar, I you know, I'm I'm old enough that I remember. Being in a non-floridated. Fluoridated water system when the debate centered on whether fluoride was a communist plot or not. And uh I didn't get the benefit of it. Uh, my my younger brother did, and the dental outcomes in our family are dramatically different. Uh, but there is an added cost to the consumer which isn't in or the which isn't in the rate. And and that's when if as a responsible parent, you take your kid to the dentist and you give fluoride treatment, this costs you extra money and it. It would, uh, I think benefit the folks on the lower end of the economic spectrum. A lot more than it would on the upper. Uh, for that very reason, uh, I could afford fluoride treatments for my kids, other kids don't even get, they don't care, so.
If I may speak, I I mean, it's, this is just becoming right now, just a money issue. We, you know, want to support equity. In housing in Lakewood by having very, very low water rates, and we work really hard at that. And all these costs coming at us, you know, um. Is putting pressure on rates and potential even double digit. You know, a percent. Increases, we're trying to avoid that at all costs, so we're. I- i- it's, we're really, PFAS is just killing us, it it it, you know. And once we get beyond that, we had, I think, discussions here that, you know, we could. You know, come back and look at for fluoridation, but right now is we just gotta have clean water. You know, that's just, that is the the more, you know, the bottom. That that's what we need to do is in ensure clean water, so we're pouring all of our. Money into that, very frankly, you know, so.
Just a a follow up question to that, um. Will the the capital costs of PFAS impact your. Is it repair and renovation program that you've been, you've taken on over the last? Ten, fifteen years, are you, are, do you see an, do you see an impact on that?
Well, that, in fact, I was talking to Commissioner Corzmo earlier today that. That is one of the options that we're going to present in order for us not to have to go out to the revenue bond market. Is to maybe potentially reduce. The amount of R and R programs that we do for the next couple of years in order to offset. The capital costs that we're facing, should we not get grant funding or. Um, some of the other areas that we're currently seeking to help pay for this. Um, it's certainly, it's certainly an option, and that could happen where we would delay. Uh, two years, uh, which we're funding right now, four point five million dollars a year. In our in our programs. We wouldn't stop doing them, but we would just reduce the amount that we do, say one point five and leave three million. In twenty twenty-four and another three million in twenty twenty-five to help pay for the program.
Yeah, that's a great question, so we're we're not quite a quarter way through of our. Re- replacement and rehabilitation program for all the main lines in the city of Lakewood. Um, it's basically just under a fifty year program. And we've doubled up since we went on to this program, we've been doubling the amount of construction every year to stay on on task, and it's a very important program for me and one I'd like to see continue. Um, but we are looking at, you know, for the mitigation of this PFAS issue. Um, you know, our really only remedy for funds is to go out and borrow that money, we are um being fairly successful with some grant applications, um, so. Um, you've influenced us on that, the amount of grant money that you've been receiving and doing the work that you've done here in the city. And we're being very successful with that now too, and that's helping us out, so hopefully if we're more successful on the grant program. Then we can stay with our replacement program. Mr. Branson?
Yes, thanks, Mayor, if if I could just circle back to the fluoridation question. You know, I uh I have similar. Past rememberances, as as Councilmember Anderson of 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 uh. Being at a place where when the transition was made to fluoridating water to do that. And of uh. Seeing a a significant difference, and in 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 Lakewood, we. Um, are are constantly reminded about the fact that dental health, particularly in the related, is something that is. Often not covered by the minimal types of insurance that low income residents uh have, uh. Yeah, but that it becomes a long term. Thing to do that, I think that's it goes on, and I appreciate the costs. Uh, concerned to do that, but. I kind of wonder, when I look in your uh thing over here of where you have the. The compa- rates comparison with other water purveyors. Okay, that how much of that difference between Lakewood? And some of the others is because they have taken on for their communities, the cost of in. Of of the capital cost and the ongoing costs of 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 fluoridating water to be able to go and do that. You know, you know, it, and and while I, I benefit from having. The 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 low water rates, but I'm not so sure that I. If that's the the thing that is keeping the community as as a whole from being able to benefit from what. I think would be a public health. Upgrade uh that I I think that would would go and do that. Um, and so, uh, I mean, and I'm assuming that some of these others have have made that. That transition, because I remember the conversations back in the early two thousands about these people have and these people don't. Oh, what it what it was and, um, it goes on, um. And you're talking with with whether it's the. Trying to deal with the PFAS or the um, or or how are we gonna. Structure things if there's new development, particularly if there's new development on. Lots of new development on a small scale with all the ADUs and things to be able to go and do that that are gonna cause. The district to have capital costs. And you mentioned that you're looking at strategies to try to. Deal with equity and promote affordable housing to do that. And in the city's comprehensive plan, we've got a very specific statement about we'd wait with water purveyors. Would pass through the co- capital costs for any new development to. The beneficiary, I guess, is 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 the way that it's worded. And I'm wondering whether if you're looking to have some flexibility about how you distribute costs. If you would. Maybe not tonight, but would have some suggestion about how that policy in the comprehensive plan. Might be worded to provide some flexibility. Here, that to to not just. You know, particularly look at the specific development that's re- requiring twenty thousand dollars to somehow go to that person to get the twenty and 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 and. Some other ways to do that, so that we're in sync with what's with intent as opposed to. The letter of what we said.
It's more of a comment than a question, I think, but did you have something? Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Councilman, I I think, yeah, we're willing to look in into that, and then I think also it'd be great to kind of. You know, take a little closer look as to, you know, what your comp plan is saying uh versus what ours is saying and see if we can align those. Uh, as well, and Randy, if you'd like to bring that to our attention. Look at that.
Yeah, I I I would just say that one other thing in our comp plan is it. City speaking, it says that that coordinate with other entities to conduct studies to evaluate the AquaFern its long term capabilities. Um, yeah, I'm not really sure. How we do that, we just sort of assume you're doing it. Uh, or that you and the other water purveyors are doing it, but it might be that um. There is something that is uh. More proactive uh that we could do jointly in terms of. Taking a look at what's gonna be available twenty and thirty and fifty years from now.
It sounds like from Mr. Black that they're already planning for one percent growth, and your projection is correct for the population for the water availability, and and we're good. Even with our eighty-four, eighty-five thousand resident target through what, twenty? Forty-three, yeah, twenty forty-three? So that sounds pretty good, but certainly more coordination than than less is always great. Last topic, we'll throw it out there, uh, money, 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 right? And I see in your sheet, and it's always near and dear to our hearts, how do we best? Uh, elaborate on seeking grant funds for both your purposes and ours, and I know that was a topic of interest on your sheet. Mr. Coffield and his staff have have done yeoman's work. Uh, on getting grants for the city, so maybe there's some opportunities with specialized grants to do more infrastructure work and utilities as opposed to just roads, I don't know. But there was a topic of interest you had.
Yeah, I think if 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 there was an opportunity to make, you know, potentially grant. More attractive because it has a broader sweep of an of investment and benefit to the public, such as adding water or sewer. Or whatever, I know the city's been very successful with getting that grant funding. Um, we would like to see, could we enter into that process somehow where we could be a recipient of that? Work um in that grant funding, again, it just helps us in stretching out our dollar. To other areas, other projects, other things that are going on, so we look at the city as as being. Very successful with this process, and if there's some way potentially that we could. Enter into an agreement where we can then get our water system paid for as projects come up, I think it isn't that a win win deal for everybody.
Absolutely, it's always based on the the qualifications of the grant program typically, the ones that that Mr. Bokey and I sit in on for the. Pierce County Regional Council are typically transportation related, and they've got all these sort of cut up qualifications, but Mr. Coffield, you have thoughts on that?
Thank you, Mayor, so if there's any grants out there that meet that, we'd, we're all all ears, um. You know, the way that cities work are actually municipalities in Washington State, the way that grants are made available. It's very silent, so for example, there's transportation grants. So the city, we're in the transportation business, we pursue those those grants. Um, I'm not aware in my career where a transportation grant can be used to fund. A utility, likewise, I'm not aware of a utility grant that can be used to fund a general government program. Likewise, there's the silo of parks grants, you know, we'd like to use parks grants in support of our transportation program, but we we can't. There's public safety grants, they're all, so they're all different silos, but certainly if the Lakewood Water District is aware of a grant that's out there where we can do that. You know, certainly.
It it does, well, we're not a full service city, obviously, but in those cities that are full service, do they do things differently or they similarly silent?
I have, Mayor, I have on a full service city with water and sewer, and the short answer is no, I I have not experienced it.
Got it.
Um, I'm not saying that it doesn't exist, um, but I'm just saying, I I haven't experienced it. What I've experienced is when you're going after transportation funding, it's specifically for transportation, now you can, you can meld projects. Where um you have utility funds, you have park funds, and you have transportation funds, but those dollars can only be used for those purposes. So that's the challenge we face, and and by the way, this has been a battle that's been going on with our state legislature and our and our Congress as well. To allow flexibility for municipalities to be able to um use monies across different disciplines, but again, it comes back to the issue of. The taxpayer versus the rate payer.
And stormwater funds are not able to be utilized for this component of the work in the roads.
Stormwater uh dollars are specifically dedicated for stormwater purposes pursuant to Washington State law. Um, stormwater utilities are relatively new in Washington State. Uh, matter of fact, my previous city that I worked at was one of the first cities to actually set up a water, a stormwater utility in the. In the late eighties, early nineties, um, so it's a relatively new one, but it's specifically for stormwater purposes, it can't be used for sewer, it can't be used for water. That's why when you look at the financials of, for example, a full service city that has water, sewer, stormwater, electric. Um, you know, you have your general fund, which is separate, you have a water fund, which is separate, sewer fund, they all have to be, et cetera, et cetera, they all have to be. Duly segregated and kept separate. So it'd be great if we had flexibility, um, you know, like the private sector where. You know, if you're a plane manufacturer, you're, you can take the profits from over here and you can invest. you know, if you're a plane manufacturer, you're you can take the profits from over here and you can invest it over there, but we don't have that flexibility to be able to do that.
And like, gotta keep sewer and water out of the same line, right?
Yeah, that's correct. One flows out, one flows in and they both they they both deal with gravity.
Mr. Anderson. The only thing it kind of comes to mind is a possibility, just to keep your uh I guess what went forward would be uh like a D SIP grab from the Department of Defense where you had a project that could provide transportation improvements for access to joint baselism cord that included a water project tying in to the base for utilities resiliency, which is a big topic of concern for them now having redundancy in all utilities. So um I could see if the if if the proper location uh was involved collaborating on that and being very competitive. But I don't know what that location would be right now, but. Well, they they promised to, you know, there's a whole story behind how we helped develop that program and then we're finishing Washington Boulevard and access to North Fort without any federal money because people in inside DOD kind of hijacked the what was meant to be a transportation based program to build community centers and swimming pools.
That's a water project in North. Mr. Branstad or Mr. Bokey and then we'll probably get a rapper on here.
Yeah, you know, despite all the fences put up by accountants and lawyers and legislators that I would say that it would certainly be in the best interest of the city and the folks that are here that if a grant exists and one of us is going to be the applicant, that um and certainly in 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 the water scene, if you're applying for a grant, that uh the city can certainly lend its voice to emphasizing the public benefits uh of any project to the extent that that helps uh a grant application be fruitful.
Yeah, and your city manager's been wonderful and very accommodating to those requests and has written many support letters on our uh grant applications where we've been able to. He's right there responding right away with those requests when they're made.
Two two comments, then a quick question. Um, the comp plan that you discussed, we're required by law to have that done, the update by the end of twenty twenty four. Um, so for council's knowledge, Mr. Black did a very nice presentation to the planning commission several months ago on the utility portion of that along, I think the Lakeview Power and Light folks were there. I think everybody was there that day, that night except PSC. Um, so did a very nice job and explained that they had sufficient capacity. I would I would point out one item I think you did really help us out in really very cooperative was the the additional line there at Fort Silicon Park, which allowed us to, along with the insertion of the sewer line, to to make some improvements there. And it also helps with the H barn if that is that project is is working its way through there in the fundraising phase. Uh, but the the need for water there was uh very important to continue that and to do that to do the gathering place there. So that was really very important to us and very, very helpful. I do have one question, though. Western State Hospital, what's your role in that? Because I think we've talked about where they're they have their own water, but now that might not be sufficient. Where are you at in that?
So uh where we are with Western State Hospitals, we have been, believe it or not, since nineteen seventy nine been asked to uh take over the water system. So um and we are at that situation again where they want us to take over their water system. Uh, obviously, the system has been left in ill repair for a long, long time. And so uh the the host or DSHS is who we've been working with and and uh they're trying to understand the requirements because I think for years and years and years, they've been left to kind of operate the way they see fit. Um, and so when they approached us about getting out of the water business and turning over the system to us, we said that's fine, but we need to have a conditional assessment done on the entire system so that we understand that the system that needs that has been in ill repair for all these years has to be upgraded. It has to be paid by somebody. It's not going to be paid by the Lakewood Water District rate payers to do that. And so um uh as you know, they've just started on the hospital, the new forensic hospital, three hundred and fifty bed hospital. And one of the things that we are um I think grappling with with them is over, how do you take care of the new hospital when you don't have a funding mechanism for the existing rest of the campus? And so um we have presented the issue that we 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 don't see how you can separate the two. They would like to separate the two, focus in on the new forensic hospital, put the new system in there, and then we'll go back to the legislature to get funding for the rest uh in twenty twenty five by annual budget. And um we're kind of sending the message that we can't do that. Uh, that we can't just end up with potentially two different water systems with two different owners. So if we didn't take over the existing campus, then we would be just left with serving the new forensic hospital and DSHS would still be left with the existing campus. And so uh it's been a lot of education because we're we're really dealing with folks who really don't understand water and understand infrastructure and the importance for all the relating aspects of it. The other piece is is that if you take a look at our service area, then you drew around all of Lakewood. And in the about the middle to the northwest section is a little hole, which is Western State Hospital. We don't have any regulatory or purview over that area. So DOH has been reluctant to necessarily hold DSHS to the same level that any other utility would have to measure up to. And we've made that known to them that you know, you're going to be left with one system or two different systems with two different owners operating it. And that's not really the the foundation or the principles that DOH wants to happen. So uh we're hopeful that through letter writing and through education from DOH that they can educate DSHS on what their conditions and requirements are going to be if they don't sign an agreement or if they don't come up with a plan on how they want to operate the entire system. So we're kind of at that point right now where I really don't have an answer as far as which way this is going to go. We don't have besides um the potential of water rights that could be received from the hospital. There's really no interest. There's no advantage for the district to operate that system. There really isn't. Um, and I think that's where they're starting to slowly understand that they should get out of the 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 liability side of operating a water system.
So they obviously have their own well or two or three or whatever over there?
Yeah, they have two wells uh that they have. They have the east campus well and then they have what we call the farm well, which is located in the park.
So when we transferred ownership, we didn't get the water rights. Is that correct, Ms. Walker and or Mr. Caffield? I forget what happened. We talked about it, the water rights when we transferred title from Fort Silicon Park to the city.
The water rights and the water systems do not transfer, I'm sorry, with that property. That is a separate issue.
In other words, it didn't transfer at the time. Got it. Okay. And I know there was some conversation at the time about getting those for LWD's benefit, but. Yes, Councilor Laura Sella.
Yeah, sure. All right, so I I haven't spoken up much, but uh um question, and it may be something for a future time we get together, uh but I grew up in the Ponder's neighborhood. Uh, I was born in eighty one and that's when the super fund site happened. As I've been doing a little research on it, I understand that Lakewood Water District was sort of stewards of the testing and worked with the ecology. Uh, could you give us an update on where that is? Is that all closed out or where are we at?
Yeah, so you're correct. Back in uh eighty one, it was designated as a super fund because of the old plaza cleaners that was on the other side of the freeway. And there was PCE and TCE were the two uh chemicals that were used. They were degreasing agents that were used for laundry and so well before subject systems and so, I mean, excuse me, for sewer systems and so they were just stars through the subject system and that's how they entered into the groundwater. As part of the remediation action that uh the EPA took on on that super fund site was is to provide uh treatment to remove TCE and PC out of it. It's it the airstripping towers, as we call them, are a hundred percent effective. There is absolutely, it's completely gone. Um, the I will tell you that in testing that the levels have decreased. But even running the analytical modeling and taking a look at what that timeline looks, it's still fifty to a hundred years out before it's completely been pulled out and a new water enters in. So you you have this whole thing of circulation, but it's going to take the estimate fifty to a hundred years before it's completely and all that 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 site can then dispose of its airstripping system. We received a uh because DOE has primacy and has assumed that um system over there, we did get in two thousand and nineteen uh a five million dollar grant to replace airstripping towers, which we now have, which is a state of the art stainless steel uh system that's, you know, right now estimated last fifty years. So um uh but we now are achieving a hundred percent and we have always achieved a hundred percent removal of both chemicals.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I remember the seeing the old hours from my bedroom window as a kid, so thank you.
Things we were exposed to as kids. Yeah, it's challenging, right? Well, gentlemen, uh, thank you for coming and it's because we're not a full service city that these meetings become even more meaningful. And it's an opportunity for us to at least discuss issues of common concern and collaborate and certainly work together for the betterment of all our residents because we serve them all together and that's the beauty of what we have. So thanks again for coming unless there's any other comments for the good of the order. I would encourage you to try another churro over there at the table. Gary.
I just want to say uh thank you for this get together. I really, I I agree with you a hundred percent. This is about community and, you know, the the more we can work together, you know, the better the better things hopefully will turn out. So just thank you for your time very much.
Yeah, I think as a commission, we were looking forward to being around a table together. And uh, you know, now, you know, we talk about a few specific things, but I think between you know, us here at the table and then with our staffing and our team members, um, you know, just the working relationship is what we're really really looking forward to. As we, as you say, you know, serving the same residents. You mentioned you had sixty to eighty, potential eighty thousand residents and and that um that equates to seventeen thousand seven hundred connections for us. So a lot of numbers, but um we do appreciate the time and and the collaboration and the cooperation, working together and we're looking for a good, you know, we want to keep this type of relationship. I know the um city is just is a good leader and um we're looking to be a part of that. And the district has always had such a great culture and working relationship. And if you can't tell, um, our general manager down there on the end has got a lot of experience and he's going to be retiring on us here later this year. So we're going to miss that, but um he's got a lot of history in the district and a lot of lot of knowledge.
Absolutely. Uh, how did they let that happen? Because we've we've threatened the city manager that he can't retire on any one of our watches. And so it makes it makes it really challenging for him to kind of predict when he could retire, so. Yeah.
That's probably pretty true. Yeah, no, I it it's a it's that point where I've been very fortunate, blessed. Mayor Willen to be the general manager now twenty seven years and to work with a great board of commissioners and that, let's be honest, that's really unheard of nowadays in the public sector to be working at one utility for that long. And um, you know, I'm very proud of the fact that our board and staff work very diligently in the best interest of our rate payers, the citizens of Lakewood. And so when that's the foundation heart and the motivation and the transparency of what people do, it makes the job so much easier when that's the case. And and I've been very fortunate to have great professional people, staff that have taken that to heart and and have worked very hard at doing the right thing for our rate payer. So uh but it's time for a new set of vision. It's nice to see that um we've got folks that um are stepping up and some of the old guards are, you know, retiring and I think it's going to be in the district's long term benefit to see that new vision, that new energy to come into the district and see where it takes us in the next ten to fifteen, twenty years.
Well, absolutely. I'm sure we will have occasion at your behest to bring Mr. Black back for an official congratulations and thank you on behalf of the city council, but if we don't get a chance to meet collectively uh before that time, thank you for your service. You know, you've been an incredible asset for the city of Lakewood, uh working on behalf of the Lakewood Water District, but we're all the residents of the city, so we really appreciate your expertise over the years. And we will have you back. We we like to do proclamations for people who do incredible longstanding work in the city. So thank you again. So unless uh we have anything else, we're going to adjourn for five minutes so that we can finish up with a couple of little items over in the side table. Madam Clerk, if you'll stop the recording and then we'll be at recess for five minutes. Madam Clerk, if you'll stop the recording and then we'll be at recess for five minutes. Well, welcome back after the recess, ladies and gentlemen, to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for this Monday, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. We have several items for discussion tonight. And the first is the review of the multifamily tax exemption code. And for this, we have our Economic Development Manager, Ms. Newton.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen. Good evening, everyone. Good to be with you tonight. Okay, so this evening, we're gonna, uh, review the multifamily tax exemption. Uh, recently, the Planning Commission has reviewed it and put forward some recommendations. And so I'll just briefly go over, um, some items here with regard to that. So, um, just to start out with, uh, the city code, section three, six, four, oh, two, oh, uh, really has a purpose of encouraging residential within mixed-use centers as well as stimulating new construction and rehabilitation of housing. Also helping to direct future population growth to the residential target areas within Lakewood and achieving development densities conducive of, uh, transit use. So in, uh, twenty twenty-one, the state amended several elements in the statute, which included allowing a wider number of cities to participate in the MFT programs, particularly for twelve-year. Uh, also permitting twelve-year extensions to existing tax exemptions in exchange for provisions of income and rent-restricted housing units. Supplying tenant relocation assistance, requiring an evaluation of risk of displacement and physical and economic displacement of as a result of the program. Providing new reporting requirements for communities, uh, participating in the program and allowing for a twenty-year exemption in exchange for permanently affordable rental or owner-occupied housing. And then also requiring more comprehensive reporting and auditing, uh, processes. So Mr. Bure did, uh, provide an update to city council in January of twenty twenty-two on the potential impacts to the city of Lakewood. Uh, the city has also engaged Burke Consulting, in particular Andrew Bjorn, uh, one of their, um, members who is working with the state and updating, uh, their program. So the intent of the updated legislation is to incentivize multifamily housing, increase densities, increase production of market-rate housing, develop permanently affordable housing opportunities, promote economic investment and recovery, as well as attempting to create family wage jobs. So as I mentioned, we had a review with the Planning Commission. They held a public hearing on May seventeenth and action was taken on June seventh. Um, our apologies, um, after some updating through the the packet, we inadvertently left off the resolution, but I do have copies of that, um, which I'll pass around in just a moment and, uh, review briefly, uh, with you as well. So, um, we note that, of course, Lakewood must comply with legislative updates. Uh, the MFT programs are typically focused on either economic development or affordability. While we have both options, typically a city, um, uh, focuses on either economic development or affordability. And overall, the Planning Commission believes this is an important program and incentive in order to encourage development, particularly in our downtown and Lake Lakewood Station district areas and other areas that we may need to densify housing in. The Planning Commission would also like Lakewood to revisit expansion of the RTAs once the twenty twenty-four comp plan has been adopted. Uh, we believe that waiting until that, um, point in time would be a a better choice. Um, prepare, we have to prepare an annual MFT report, uh, to city council is a recommendation from the Planning Commission as well. So you keep updated on the progress of the program. Uh, currently.
I just have a question. I didn't mean to interrupt the patter here, but I did have a question about waiting until the twenty twenty-four comp plan amendments to incorporate possible expansion of the RTA, because it seems to me it would be best to have it in the twenty twenty-four comp plan update at some point as opposed to then amending it thereafter. So is it just a matter of timing, staff capacity, what?
That was the commission's recommendation. And in the report, we indicated that, okay, that's fine, but you make make a good point. If you're going to go ahead and and do it, do it as a part of the twenty twenty-four update. And I would also say to the council, there's a need to amend eighteen A ninety oh five oh. That's kind of a companion section that allows for reductions in fees and other, uh, benefits or incentives for low and moderate income housing. So actually, we're going to do that with the twenty-four update. It actually makes sense that if we're going to propose something at a higher or different RTA, let's do it all at the same time.
Well, by my question, you can tell I would concur with that. And I think perhaps others might as well. Mr. Fran Center?
Yeah, just in terms of in the, in the short term, in the, in the twenty twenty-three comp plan amendments, um, one of them that we're going to have for approval is adding seven parcels to this CBD. But in the text of that uh, comp plan amendment that's on the agenda for the next time we meet, there's no mention of also expanding the RTA.
Well, it would be included because the CBD is in here.
Well, uh, the the, but they're, but the two are established by different pieces of documents, the the this, the RTA happened to match this CBD, but it, but it, i- 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 if we don't specifically say we're expanding the RTA to include those seven parcels. Ooh. And 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 they are the parcels that are very likely to be attractive to the kind of development that multifamily tax exemption might, um, incentivize.
Mr. Bure?
Two things.
This is why I want to do this.
Yeah, uh, two things. We can go back to the Planning Commission indicate the time is now to take a look at expanding the RT bound, RTA boundaries. So we can, I I get a recommendation from them. The two are separate. We have zoning and RTA. I couldn't, I could imagine that if the council wanted to as a part of its ordinance or direct staff to go ahead begin the process to amend the RTA for those two properties, those properties for the CBD. So that's, that's something to consider at your upcoming meeting. I don't see that as being that difficult.
Well, thank you, because it would be at least consistent, right? If we're gonna expand CBD, as well as expanding the RTA. We just have a lot of moving parts right now.
Right.
Sorry, Ms. Newton. Now you can continue.
Absolutely.
Despite our horrible interruptions. No, thank you.
No worries. Okay, uh, let's see. Okay, going on to the the majority of the, uh, suggested changes, uh, from the Planning Commission. So currently, we have four units minimum. Uh, Burke and city staff suggested including duplexes and providing clear requirements for affordability and proper dispersment of units. Uh, Planning Commission opposed the duplexes and city, uh, staff, um, concurred. Um, and the reason for that is because it it requires quite a bit of of work. And in 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 addition to that, uh, we would like to see an increase for the minimum to fifteen units to keep it simple um, for the projects. Um, we also concur with that recommendation from the Planning Commission. Uh, Planning Commission also recommended no MFT in low-density areas and also provide clear requirements regarding the affordable designations and specify whether or not parking costs are considered as part of the affordable calculations. So under permanent residential occupancy, uh, Burke had recommended removing the twelve-year in favor of the twenty-year approach. Uh, city staff suggested retaining the twelve-year and simply adding safeguards within the program to prevent the affordable units from from being sold at market rate during the direct duration of the, um, yes. Mr. Bure?
Just to add one little brief point, right now, under the current state code, twelve units, you get the, you're required to set aside certain for either lower or moderate. But after the twelve years, it's, it goes away. So the recommendation here is, you know, if you're going to do the twelve units, see if we can can, if twelve years.
So you're saying extend to twenty? I'm sorry about the microphones. I I'm a little unclear about that. So it's, it's not twelve units, right?
Twelve years.
Twelve years.
Twelve years, yeah. It's extension of the twelve-year MFT potentially to twenty years. In other words, to incentivize developers to keep that percentage of low-income housing for a longer period of time.
Period of time, correct.
And give them an incentive to invest in perhaps a bigger, more quality project because they'll get a twenty-year tax exemption as opposed to twelve-year, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Can there be a combination? Is a possibility where you can get a twelve-year tax exemption, but you have to have a twenty-year covenant?
Take your pardon?
Covenant. For low-income housing, there's it's very common to have subsidies that run for X, but the covenant is you have to have twenty or twenty-five years of low-income housing or you lose.
Let us take a let us take a look at that. I think you can do that, but let me go back and review some of the manual requirements the state has.
Yeah, and my thought there is that if at the front end, people don't always consider the the back end as carefully and they're looking at financing and their initial cash flow. And so twelve years is quite a subsidy. I'd hate to tie it up for twenty, but we might be able to include a program where to get the twelve, you you need to tie up a certain number of units for the twenty and you know, a high kind of income level or something.
So I believe that, um, I mean, the council or the city has flexibility in what you would like to include. So if if in exchange, as you had suggested, in exchange for the longer term, we could require a covenant. But we will, um, also check the statute on that.
So how did, well, it wasn't a multifamily tax exemption. It was a a, it was, it was a density bonus that we did for the, uh, the project that is down on Seventy-seventh Street where issue wasn't so much the tax exemption. issue wasn't so much the tax exemption as it was the parking and other things. And we went in and we, and I think that we then put a twenty year covenant for those units to all be fifty five plus units. Is that the same sort of thing we would be be talking about?
Okay, eighteen A ninety applies to all properties in the city of Lakewood.
Don't have to be in an R T A.
You don't have to be in an R T A.
Yeah.
So that's the difference with that property versus being in multifamily tax exemption. He requested these density bonuses, reduction in fees, et cetera. And then in turn placed the deed restriction on his property for affordable housing. Okay, he was not in the R T A, so he couldn't take advantage of the tax program.
Yeah, but the fact that we required essentially a covenant that the project for twenty years serve fifty five plus is a sort of an addendum we could make on, even if it was a multifamily tax exemption.
Yes.
All right, so let's see. So there could be a deed restriction placed on the property with regard to the planning commission in favor of extending that perhaps. We suggest adding language not to allow market rate sale during the M F T E period. Also note that while the twenty year option is yet to be used, staff suggested potentially adding it to the code. It wasn't something that the planning commission was necessarily in favor of, and they have not seen a particular interest in the twenty year program by developers as of yet. However, it's it's fairly new in the statute.
Well, here's a question for you on that. Would a developer who's currently in a twelve year or an eight year M F T E have the ability to seek an application to extend from eight to twenty, or would it only be for new builds?
In the current statute, they can if council chooses to add that to the code, they can within eighteen months of expiration of the eight or the twelve year can extend it another twelve years, actually, so. Okay, some of the other planning commission comments need more housing in general, as we all know, including affordable, agree with increasing the partnerships as well as they know that affordability at twenty percent is difficult to pencil. M F T framework is substantial incentive, as I mentioned earlier. Review of housing needs and find out what the competition is doing and what we may be losing to our competition. Incentivize mixed use and consider other incentives that could be added. And it's not likely that a developer will overbuild in the market and the market still plays a major role. With regard to compliance, of course, they must comply with our comp plan zoning and building code, et cetera. And they suggest including a partial waivers of downtown subarea plan action, transportation fee. Note that the traffic mitigation fee is scheduled for review in two thousand twenty four. Also, they suggested allowing for flexibility in development standards. Staff generally is not in favor without further clarification of this. Also, it could have a significant impact on the sub area plans. And staff needs clarification, as I men- mentioned, with regard to inclusionary housing and if the council so desires to go that way. And then also note that there is this housing needs assessment coming before council on July tenth. So there will be more information coming forward with regard to that. Provide clearer fee reductions as as Mister Bueller had mentioned. L M C eighteen A ninety fifty requires that we also look at that and match what is in eighteen A to the M F T E program noting that in M F T E, one of the things that was discussed was that equal proportion of units built must be of the same type, for example, fifty percent units, one bedroom, fifty percent two bedroom. Although after looking at our rental housing survey, we did note that there is a lack of one bedroom and studio apartments here in Lakewood. So a consideration of that may be prudent. The city must update its code and manual audit requirements and owner reporting as well. So as far as the application procedure, so consider adding the twenty year code is something that staff had considered. And as I mentioned, planning commission wasn't particularly crazy about that. And the big one really that they had talked about was considering switching from council approval to administrative. And the reasons were to reduce time and increase predictability on whether or not a M F T E project would be approved. Assurances and consistency with the council process necessarily garant does not necessarily guarantee that. Council would need assurances as well. We believe that the program and checklist are adequate in order to for you to feel comfortable going with that type of process. And minor adjustments to design should be at the staff level and not go back to council, even if the program remains council approved. That was a recommendation by the planning commission. Council would still need to approve development agreements. And they suggest providing a sunset provision or reauthorization deadline for the M F T E or perhaps you having a more regular review of the M F T E program to ensure that we are getting to the densities and what we're we're intending for this program. We will need to develop an auditing program. Most of that will be done by the state and we anticipate them completing that process by January of two thousand twenty four. And then, as we mentioned, continue to look at expansion to other areas of Lakewood as well. I can tell you that the programs that have been most successful and what I mean by most successful, they've had the most projects, do have larger areas that the M F T E is available in those different municipalities. Uh, let's see. So other additional considerations as we're looking at program updates, consider staff time to administer the program. Also, risk of displacement, we certainly don't want to displace low income from market rate M F T E pro- program or projects. And also meet meeting the density requirements for the downtown Lakewood Station and future requirements for telecom and other areas within the city of Lakewood. And so another item to consider is a what affordability level that we want to offer. So right now, the city of Lakewood uses HUD definitions and so so Mister Bueller has prepared a a chart and I can pass those out to you because they might be of interest. And that shows the affordability that we currently use to determine low income. So the HUD is essentially based on, you know, the family size. And the planning commission recommended that we go to Tacoma fair market rent. Based on that number, the fair market rent is eighty four thousand three hundred seventy three, whereas the HUD base level is seventy one thousand. So that's just an that's just my comment. So
Those those are Tacoma's numbers. We the chart that you've been provided is the numbers that the city of Lakewood uses through its C D B G and home program. Those are the number that we would recommend to the city council. Those, yes. And that shows you exactly what is meant by thirty, fifty and eighty percent, what that means. And we did a quick example how it would be calculated for a person of family of four under the category of fifty percent median income, which comes down to a rent of around twelve hundred and seventy dollars a month. So that's that's the process. This is a question that always comes up with the city council. We've tried here in an attempt to simplify this so that you can see how this works. Also, too, the HUD numbers vary from year to year and the median income number will change from year to year specifically to Tacoma to Lakewood.
Though there's a mild degree of complexity to it, I I have used and understand how the HUD system works. And there is a it's a known benchmark used for any number of programs. So you're suggesting a number that Tacoma calculates?
No, we're not suggesting Tacoma's numbers calculation. I think what what Becky was pointing at was how what how Tacoma does it.
Okay.
And that that's what the planning commission had recommended. And I think the reason for that is that it may increase the access for a developer to take advantage of the twenty percent. That makes sense because we at a fair market rate of eighty four thousand versus the HUD rate, there's additional qualification that would be required.
So what state statute require as far as setting a limit?
Yes.
What is it required?
Statute required is what's in this chart.
Okay.
This is.
We can increase it, which may so the the qualification levels for low income would be higher if we adopted the Tacoma fair market rate.
What I'm not understanding, if the state statute requires this chart, how do we adopt a Tacoma rate? And why would we even consider adopting anything that Tacoma has control?
So the new state statute allows for the metropolitan area, which is the Tacoma fair market rate. So we can adopt the Tacoma fair market rate if we choose to. We do not have to use the HUD levels.
So it does allow?
It does allow it, yes.
And how is that calculated?
You you end up with a higher median income. And so what that means is technically you are going to get more people who are going to qualify.
Well, yeah, but how how's it calculated?
I'd I'd have to provide additional information on that.
So if and you you have highlighted fifty percent median income here. Then we just said it if we wanted to hire an income level, say, we're going to go with the HUD system, but it's eighty percent.
I I apologize for the confusion, but the the city staff's position is to use the HUD numbers. This represents the HUD numbers for C D B G and home.
At at what level? Fifty, sixty, eighty?
Well, it depends. It depends upon the size of the family and and their income levels.
Well, I know that, but it when we said it, there's fifty percent highlighted here.
Yes.
Is that what's suggested and what are the what are the options? Is it, can we set it at a hundred?
The reason that's highlighted is if you go down and see the example, I was just using that number to show you what the rent would be for a person, a family of four with a median income of fifty thousand seven fifty. That's all.
We currently use HUD at eighty percent.
Okay. Thanks. So a a couple of things, the new guidelines from the state do thirty thirty eighty, thirty sixty eighty or something like that. We have to fill those buckets along with emergency housing and various things like that. And the the formula that they use there is the formula that everybody uses. I I sat through a presentation and so you look at that median income at fifty thousand for a family of four. And you take that fifteen thousand two twenty five and then divide it by twelve, right? To get your average monthly rent, which would be less than, should be about thirteen hundred a month, less than thirteen hundred a month. Can a family of four provide, find an apartment in the city of Lakewood at thirteen hundred dollar a month, thirteen hundred dollars a month? And and so so I sat there a presentation where a woman from Portland went through this and she said, in the city of Portland, if you're at sixty percent of the median income, and then she actually had it broken down by race. And she said, somebody, an African American family that's at sixty percent of the African American median income in the city of Portland, there is not a single unit of housing that they can afford under the under what they know, you know, it's like so they they it it that thirty percent limitation kind of gives you an idea of where you're at. One other thing to keep her keep your ears open for is there's some consideration on the federal level I just heard last week that of excluding the A H, the housing allowance for at least lower listed personnel from the calculation for affordable housing. So they would be eligible for affordable housing units by excluding their housing allowance and indirect subsidy. That I've never heard of that as a possibility before, but it's evidently being considered at some fairly high level. They qualify for subsidized housing. Right? Because families with a single income, E five, maybe six and below, struggle with housing in higher cost areas like ours.
I I had a couple of questions. There's a section in here that talks about in lieu of payments for bonus units. Normally, we under current code, you can get a bonus unit if you do something to make the project more attractive, being able to go and do that, but you can't just buy a bonus unit. Is that what the planning commission is talking about? Just let a developer buy more units?
A developer, there is a process that's used by several western Washington cities where they can purchase in lieu units by paying a fee for low income. There's a very structured formula for it. Requires a high level of sophistication. It's really beyond our ability to put something like that together. If that's something that the council wants to consider, we can bring it back. But it is a substantial work item for this department to proceed with an in lieu of fee for affordable housing. So when you build a house, you would pay an in lieu fee through a calculation that gets set aside to a housing fund that's applied to affordable housing projects in the city. Seattle does this fairly frequently. It's a fairly high fee.
Well, I guess I personally wouldn't be in favor of letting a developer if if the inclusive zoning listed something of saying, well, I'll just buy more units to be able to go into that. Doesn't sound right, it's own. So I so I so I wouldn't really want to see that change in the code. There is a a comment here that says developers would be leery if the council would revoke an M F T. And it's 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 down in the 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 section under application procedure. It's the last bullet. Potential for a council to revoke M F T E can cause uneasiness with prospective developers to balk at M F T E projects. Other than then for someone not Other than then for someone not complying with all the rules, I mean, what kind of role does the council have to revoke an MFT now? Or are they proposing that we have that?
This, this. This goes back to the commission's discussion about having an administrator review and approve multifamily tax exemptions rather than the city council approve them. The comment was about the fact that some count, some developers are not as comfortable having a elected body approve and or potentially revoke MFTEs that their preference would be that it would be with an administrator because it would be less of a political process.
Well, I, I guess I would say that with respect to that recommendation, in my time on the council, we have dealt with a number of MFT applications. They, 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 they're very different than looking at Platts. Whereas Platts, you, you know, we, we, we didn't have any real choice about what we were going to decide to do that. On the MFTEs, there were some that were that, that we approved, and there were others that we didn't because we were able to look at them in, 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 in greater detail with respect to the neighborhood, with respect to that, with respect to future changes that were going to happen in the area that were, that someone was going on to be able to go and do that. So I would not be in favor of changing the code to not having MFT applications reviewed and approved by the council. I, I, I think that they, they are an, an item that benefits from a council level of due diligence to be able to go and do that. And I think it's a good thing that developers know that. I mean, we've had some developments that didn't happen, and, and we've had, but we've had others that have made modifications that have made them even better developments. One of the comments that you made talked about, we don't want to lose low income units for market rate units. And traditionally, that, that's what the MFTEs have done. You know, we've had, typ- typically, the, as we've looked at it, and we've looked at this, in the Springbrook area where we had a project or where we've had to go there. I mean, most of the MFT properties around the state are not for affordable units, and most of the units are are, 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 are market rate units to be able to go and do that. And if you build them in neighborhoods that are primarily now affordable, they're doing that. So I, 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 I think that's just the way it is because developers have a choice. We may be able to go and do that, because you're, because you're saying you only got to do a percentage one way or the other. But I wouldn't say that it is, that, that there's a way to structure the code to incentivize the fact that we won't lose any of, of affordable units. If you take, for instance, one of our RTAs is a considerable portion of it is, is, is in a, a, a mobile home park. Okay, not the best maintained mobile home park and, and being able to go and do that. But if someone were to acquire that in a way and, 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 and develop it into quality housing, some of which was affordable, that would actually be a plus to us, even though we, we, you, you, we don't necessarily want to put a firewall that says that an MFT can't result in a, a net loss of affordable housing. Because some units get re, gets replaced to be able to go and do that. And I wouldn't necessarily want the code to, 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 to do that. And so, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm more in line with the staff recommendations where there is a variance with, with the planning commission variations, at least to do right now. And I definitely wouldn't want to go to not having council of review and approval. And I, I don't necessarily want to get too into a, an in lieu of cost purchase of bonus units.
Great, Mr. Anderson.
Getting back to Councilmember Randstir's point with respect to councils versus admin approval, I, I agree that it should stay with council, but for in, in addition to those reasons, which I think are good ones, from a policy perspective. But I think there's potentially an unintended consequence, and if we go down that road, I, I'd like the city attorney to, to apply on it, not tonight, but putting my recovering lawyer hat on. There might be an unintended consequence of creating a vested right. If there's an administrative approval and the process, and somebody puts in what they feel is a compliant request, and other people have received the, the benefit, and they're turned down for some more subjective reason, we get sued. If it's a legislative act, I think it's within the legislative prerogative of this body to decide whether or not they get it. In which case, they wouldn't have a claim that they had a vested right when they, when they put in the permit application, so. I haven't done a careful analysis of that by any means. It just seems like an additional risk that we don't need to take on if, if it does in fact exist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple, couple of things. I like the idea of the fifteen unit minimum. For just for, I, I would actually do it higher, but I can live with fifteen units. I'm trying to understand, and you don't have to answer it, but trying to understand the project that would strike me where I would think that they deserve a twenty-year tax exemption. And so I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I think it would be, I mean, I can think in my mind what might be appropriate for a twenty-year tax exemption. Really targeted, really low, really well-run to, to some targeted group or something like that, rather than, hey, it's a nice project. We'll give you twenty years off on this thing. So I'm not, I'm not sure I'm. I, I guess I'm not, I'm having a hard time figuring out what would, what something would be available for a twenty-year. So along the lines of the monitoring, and you mentioned the costs of monitoring. Do we recoup those costs from the recipients or no?
Short answer is no. I mean, it's very difficult to, to recoup the cost of the annual report. We've, we've talked about it several occasions. Do we require them to pay a fee? Sometimes they don't pay the fee. I mean, I just see some issues there. I, I mean, it's an annual process. How do we find a way to collect the fee to help offset our costs? Right now, it is being subsidized by the general fund, so it is a process that Becky is, does once a year. There'll be new reporting requirements in the near future, so I assume our costs will go up. We don't have that many projects to date. We have a total of six hundred and five units via multifamily tax exemption. If, if we don't see a large number of properties, then it might not be a problem. But I do have some concerns. It's just one more added layer of bureaucracy that we have to add to this program. Those are my comments.
So I think that's something we're, we're going to need to think about. Because it just seems like if the, if the record keeping gets onerous and it's on us, that it just seems to me like that's something that's, that should be fee-related.
One, one agency requires the MFT users to actually hire a CPA who provides the report to the city of Lakewood. That might be one way of handling this.
Okay. Can, can you restrict the increase in rents year to year if we grant a twenty-year exemption?
I believe the answer is yes. You, you, you would, but here's the other part of the problem. People's income increases too. And so if you're doing the MFT correctly and people's rents are increasing, you can amend the percentage to get it to where you need to be, so you're actually seeing a slight, slight increase in your rents based upon their in, increase or other types of family situations.
You don't necessarily want to see rent control, but sometimes you might limit it to the increase in inflation or something because what, what we've seen in other areas or rents are going.
It comes back to the, the, the contents of the deep restriction. And speaking back to your question about when to apply the twenty-year, you're going to look at, and on July tenth, the housing needs assessment, and that's going to give you a lot of information about whether or not you find something as appropriate to be in that category. So I would ask council members to look at that in that venue.
Okay, so if the twenty-year homeownership rate does require twenty-five percent affordability, uh, let's see, what else? Provide for a twelve-year extension. We talked a little bit about that. The, the new statute does provide if council chooses to, they can add that so that a, an MFT recipient can apply for an extension within eighteen months of their program ending in order to get a longer extension. And also, city may increase the fees to cover the program oversight as we were just discussing. The city will be working with Commerce on, to identify the responsibility for the auditing. Most of it, as I mentioned, will be at the state level, but we will have to adopt an auditing pro, program here locally in Lakewood that complies with state. And the city can tailor its program to meet the community needs in terms of affordability and so forth. We already talked about affordability, and I do have with me the planning commission resolution. And I'll just take two minutes to review the recommended changes. If you turn to the second page, as mentioned earlier, no MFT allowed in the low-density zones. Low-density zones are MF1, ARC, and NC1. And increasing the size to fifteen. And then on page three, talks about an affordability of the unit. Affordable unit is defined as less than or equal to eighty percent of AMI for Tacoma. Now, this again is what the planning commission had recommended. However, that's determined by the council to set that as well. Size of the units, parking costs not considered part of the affordability. Property granted, twelve-year exemption may not be sold at market rate during the exemption period. Page four, recommending this addition. Property owner must provide qualifying tenants with relocation assistance equal to the amount of one month's rent. That's actually in the statute, so we do have to require that. And that's within the final month of the tenant's lease upon expiration of a twelve-year exemption. And then under H1, the director approval is in their resolution. And then moving on to page seven, in audit, Department of Commerce is required to implement and audit the program for the MFT properties every five years. And city may charge a fee to recover costs, as well as city shall comply with Department of Commerce audit requirements. And the final change was just a type of change with on page eight within the designated residential target areas. So this is really, includes what the planning commission had recommended for changes. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Stranderson.
Number five, a property granted the twelve-year exemption may not be sold at market rate during the exemption period. Let's see, if that's not further defined, it means you can't sell.
During the, that period.
Can't sell it, period.
That was their recommendation.
Well, the market rate is what somebody will pay for it with whatever restrictions it has. So that means somebody is locked into it. What if they're in foreclosure? What if the, what if the bank goes to take it back? You're restricting the bank from selling the properties, or does a bank have to hold it? Can it resell it? I mean, you have, looks like you have a legislature who knows very little about the real estate market drafting an intended consequence. So I'm concerned that we incorporate as few of those unintended consequences as possible. Because somebody has to be able to sell their property. And I don't really see where the and, and what's the purpose of that? That flutters me, except it's some legis, some legislature who, who doesn't understand anything about economics. If I'm going to buy a piece of property, I'm going to discount what I pay for it because there are restrictions on it. So if it's appraisal of an unencumbered property, any sale is going to be below that because a willing buyer wouldn't pay full price if their rents are restricted for another X number of years. If it means what the market will bear with the restrictions on it, it means they can't sell it at all. Which, in my view, is untenable. Because they have to be able to sell it. They have to be, people buy, corporations go out of business, banks close. It just says they can't sell, period. Yeah. If it's sold or not, the, the amount of affordable units within.
Yes.
Right, so Mr. Anderson's comments well taken. Why add a further complication by impacting the ability to sell?
I, I'm not disagreeing with that. We're just reporting on the planning commission's recommendation.
Got it.
Yeah, I, I had a question about the, the eligibility with respect to location. No MFT is allowed in low-density zones MF1, ARC, NC1. Do any of the RTAs include those zoning?
Off the top of my head.
It's got to be in an RTA, I mean.
I, I don't believe so. The ERC zones are found along Silicon Boulevard. The RTAs are not there. Uh, NC1 is found along major corridors. I do not find it in the, into the subarea plans I can think of off the top of my head, but we'll go back and check.
I mean, I, I don't know that we need to put it in the code if we think that we can do it by when we define where the RTA boundaries are.
Be, between defining the RTA boundaries and indicating the maximum density, which is according to the commission fifteen, I think that controls it more so than, than the specific zones themselves.
Anything else? Does Newton on that? Great. Any other feedback to staff on the recommended changes? Sounds like we've provided some good comments and feedback. So next steps, would it come back with the changes that we've discussed or?
The next step would be first of all to let the council see the housing needs assessment because that may have distinguished what you may want to see in the multifamily tax exemption code. And then thereafter, we haven't scheduled it yet before the city council as an ordinance, but that would be the next step.
So tell me about the housing needs assessment, you know, thirty thousand foot. What are we going to see?
Okay, it's a ninety-four-page document that goes, but we summarized it. But it goes through and tells you exactly what the housing needs are within the community. It also gets into some of the displacement questions and also talks about. It also gets into some of the displacement questions and also talks about equity. And where you have, uh, significant housing shortages and why. And then provides some recommendations as to how to move forward. We've also tried to incorporate the H A P T program into it, which gets even more complicated. And then begs the bigger question, how does the city wish to enforce this in the future? I mean, if you have these different income bands.
Right.
Do we approve projects? And once that income band is done. We no longer allow residential development in that band until we see other development occur in the other income bands. I'm not suggesting how that, that's what we're going to do, but we're really scratching our heads as to how this is to be implemented. But we just let the market take care of it.
Where did all the data come from to the report?
Pardon me?
Where did most of the data come from for the report? Is it commerce data?
Department of Commerce data and it's also reliant too heavily upon PSRC. Uh, the, the biggest thing I will tell you with, with all these new regulations, what's coming up in 2025. Which is even more concerning than 2024. Is I just don't see how all this is going to relate into more housing being produced. I have strong concerns that this is going to backfire.
Because someone's got to produce it and government doesn't. There's got to be, yeah, got to be adequate incentives for the market to do it. Which is a reason for the expansion, the M F T E and the RTA and all that stuff. If we want good projects, we got to incentivize the market to do it.
And, and it's always difficult to develop on redevelopment properties. Nothing ever fits.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, that's a challenge in and of itself.
Yeah, right, well, true. Okay, well, we can roll into something a little bit more intriguing. How about public nuisance code amendments?
Thank you for the discussion on the last item. I hope this one's a little simpler, but, uh, this comes by way of Jeff Gumm in the implementation of rental housing safety program. On occasion, not very often, we run into situations where someone's not following the rules within rental housing. When that happens, we go through a process of public notification, letting the landlord know that he needs to comply. That may lead into situations where we follow the next step, which would be tickets. We don't like issuing tickets. We prefer compliance in as much as possible, but oftentimes we run into situations where there's a deterioration on the units themselves. So now we have issues with garbage, uh, junk vehicles and so forth. And so we're on two different tracks, ones for rental housing and the other ones for public nuisance. So the idea here is to sort of economize and make it more efficient. So when all these three things come together, we do it as a public nuisance action if warranted. That's basically it. Again, it's not something that we use very often. That's all.
Any questions? Looks sufficient. Very good. Well, thank you. Okay, Ms. Newton, you're back up. Talk about a review of the tactical Taylor lease modification agreement. Which has all sorts of interesting questions to it.
I think I want to comment that I've, I've been here 15 and a half years and Dave is definitely now in at least the top three for the shortest presentation.
You should draw no inferences from the fact that Ms. Newton is appearing only with counsel. Actually, it was, uh, brought to our attention that there might be questions more specific to the agreement. But the questions about the relationship with the property owner and, and the substantive portions of the deal that are being made are entirely. Within her area of expertise. I'm here in case you start asking about commas and semicolons.
Or, or gifting to public funds with the rent reduction. That was going to be my question.
Um, I, I think we should just start with, go ahead and.
Okay, all right, so, uh, lease amendment for tactical Taylor. Um, city purchased the property in, uh, June of, or January of 2022. And in April of this year, tactical Taylor approached the city about a temporary deferment. Of lease payments for a year, given they are experienced, they were experienced, some cash flow issues. And hiring issues, um, as well as, um, uh, being required as an essential Department of Defense. Um, contractor, um, to defer some of their current work to other needs during the pandemic. Um, we have developed a proposal, a proposed lease amendment, uh, for city council review. As part of today's study session, the proposed amendment would reduce the monthly lease payment of, from 18,000 per month to 10,000 per month. Beginning in July of 2023 through December 20 of 25. A period of 2.5 years, it results in a lease reduction of, uh, $240,000. In addition, the term of lease would be reduced by one year from December 2026 to 2025. Coupled with a specific timeline for tactical Taylor to undertake the results. That results in them locating to a new property. The lease payments were designed to first repay the city's interfund. Loan that was needed to fully finance the acquisition of the property in January of 2022. This, uh, this change in lease payments still results in that occurring, though instead of 2024. It would occur in 2025 and included in the comparison of the original lease versus the proposed lease as prepared. Um, by, um, deputy city manager is, um. A comparison of, of what that looks like in your packet. Um, and so you can see how the numbers work. Uh, I will just add that, um, so the, uh, tactical dealer was behind on their lease payments. They did bring them current as of May 30th. Um, they've also entered into agreement with a real estate agent and the city of Lakewood, myself. And the economic development board are working closely with, uh, tactical dealer right now to take advantage of a number of grants. That will end to also help them, uh, find a suitable location to relocate to.
Mr. Anderson, before that, I would just ask a quick question on the, what, what, what's the size of the facility that they're leasing?
Uh, right now?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of a first price.
I have to look at the building, but it's around 50 to 60,000 square feet. And they only need at this point, maybe 30,000 square feet.
For 10 grand a month, okay?
Yeah, it's. It is under, uh, what is typical, yes, it is. Yes, that's correct.
I pay more for 3,000 square feet downtown Tacoma from my law firm. Mr. Anderson.
So to make sure I have the facts correct. Under the current agreement. Which has been referred to as a lease, I understood that we're on essentially a month to month now. Is that correct?
Without the proposed agreement, you are on month to month.
So it's, it's a lease that has run its initial term and it's out, or is it a rent, a monthly rental agreement? What do we have?
Right now, I believe it's month to month. I think what you get with the new proposed agreement would be the certainty of a length of time.
So the total lease payments for the next two and a half years or. Uh, under the proposal, is it, would it be yet to another two and a half? Is that correct?
Yeah, roughly two and a half, correct.
And so that's $300,000, 30 months, 10,000. And right now their obligation is to pay 18,000 for the next month. That they have, they have to give us notice to move out.
I believe that that's correct and bear in mind, um. They have now come up to date on the past due, so.
So I think that was my answer to the, I want to make sure that I understood the facts correctly. Because that was my answer to myself on the gift of public funds. They currently only are obligated to us for 18,000 and then under the new agreement, it would be 300,000.
And to follow up, I believe that was also, um, the mayor's question was about whether we have a gifting issue. And it would, um, bear some consideration, the. For lack of a better word, the weirdness of this particular parcel, because it, it can't be given to someone else. It's a parcel we're trying to clear, um, so it doesn't have the same value as a downtown loft or something on, on that order. Although I can understand why it would, would be viewed that way and that we should be mindful that it would be viewed that way. Um. What we look at is what can be considered passable consideration in any kind of a deal, right? And so when we look at this particular deal, what I believe will work for consideration is. Our interest in getting that first property to go along with getting the clear zone rolling. You may or may not remember, I know Ms. Newton was instrumental in getting some of the business owners together to have those discussions. And this is the one guy that was willing to go out there on a limb for us and say, I understand what you're trying to do and I'll go along with it. And, and having the first person through that hoop is of value to the city because of the importance of the overall project. Um, the second thing that this agreement, uh, gives us in the way of consideration is we go from that month to month to certainty through 2025. And he's amenable to making payments after some amount of negotiation with, um, this business owner. It became clear to us that we believe he's through whatever the, um, financial issues were that wasn't having him make those payments. He was able to get caught up and we believe he's able to move forward at this time. And that we believe he will seek to locate in Lakewood and it's a valuable business to the city. So, um, what I compare it to, if people start thinking, well, that's something that a business owner might do anyway. Uh, there is a, a set of cases there that I call them fire hydrant cases and their progeny. Where what passes for consideration in some of the franchise agreements, or as the manager would refer to them, are non-compete agreements. So for example, we get extra consideration from the water department because we don't start our own water department. Even though anybody looking at us knows we're not going to go out and start a water department right now. It's the fact that we have the authority to do that that gives us that consideration. So in a similar way, I see this as that type of consideration. It's enough to pass that test. And we did work with outside counsel on this, Mr. Kenan Williams. And I think he would tell you what I started with, which is that this is not a typical deal. It's not like for like, it's going from something that's able to support a business to what's going to be flat ground. And anyway, I'd be happy to try and answer any other questions.
Who owns stock and have they been asked to guarantee the lease? They've been behind. Getting a break.
I want to address that.
I beg your pardon, could you take off behind them?
Who owns the stock in tactical Taylor and have they been asked to guarantee the lease?
Who owns the stock? Oh, there are, um, family members that own the business.
Second question was, have they been asked to guarantee the lease in exchange for the reduction in rent?
Um, they have not been asked to guarantee the lease.
We did for a time consider what level of assurances we would need, including some kind of bonding on that. And we can certainly loop back. We were very clear in the negotiations that. Going for the length of time that, uh, he went was concerning to the city. Uh, with not paying, I would tell you, I think what assured us was the negotiations and realizing that it wasn't a matter of an inability. To pay, it was a matter of where, um, where he saw things going with his company and that he understands now that this is not, um. This isn't like a loan from your friend. This is where you have to actually pay. And I, I believe that he is, he is understanding that at this point.
But there's a corporate entity that has been in default in its rent and they want a reduction. And they have owners with assets. And they're promising that the payments are going to be made. So to not give a guarantee is the equivalent of negotiating default terms. And anytime I had a borrower. Or a commercial tenant on the other side of the table was a lawyer. Who started to negotiate default terms. I would say, well. Why are we talking about? The default? Aren't you going to pay? Then it shouldn't make any difference.
Mr. Brandon Center.
I guess I had a question of why the. December 2025 end date. And, and moving it from December 2026.
So, um, it was actually, um, that would be where the lease payments would end in terms of the payment for $10,000 a month. And the guarantee for them to move out by January of 2026.
Okay, but the original lease gave him. Was it through December of 2026? There's an additional 12, it was 12 months longer than this.
Correct.
So why did we not, are we not doing the new lease for that original time?
Uh, Councilmember Randstad, that's also part of the consideration because the goal is the movement out. And so part of this gave us, uh, shorter term of him staying there in that location while he was looking. It gives us sort of a sooner deadline to look towards.
Well, if. I think th- there's a goal of turning that property into bare ground. And, um. So, so another year on the lease with. That $120,000 added to the 28,000. That goes past where the city is essentially recovering the money for its own more. To do this gets us. Some money to be used upon that upon moving out, we can, I mean, we're. We're, we're going to have to absorb the demolition costs. Of that, uh. Unless it goes on, so I, you know, there's almost some advantage to us that if he wants to pay $10,000. I mean, he can move out whenever he wants, but, but he'd owe us for the lease through, if he moved out halfway through. Uh, 2024, he'd still pay us the additional six months. In other words, if we, if we ran the lease all the way through 2026 and he moved out at the end of 2025. You know, he'd still pay us. The additional months to do that and he would go out, but we would. Be able to bank some money against what we know is the future cost of. Clearing that land. So, you know, if, if, so, so I guess it's, was it his desire for the end in 2025 or is it ours?
Shortening the lease was part of our, um, perspective on, um. Having the certainty of when he would be expected to move out. To the degree that that's not, um, of value, I apologize for that, but that was part of the deal was that he was not going to be there in perpetuity. Which as was acknowledged in a month to month lease, we didn't really have like a, a set point. Where we could say, okay, this is what everyone's aiming for. Here we have that.
So this is giving us some certainty of. Payments through a certain date.
Precisely.
And, and being able to go and do that. And if for some reason he's, needs another six months. Because it's a new facility that he's going to move to requires that. We could do the same thing we're talking about now, amend the lease.
Well, we could amend the lease, but if they, if we sign this lease and, uh, in exchange for. The concession to go to the $10,000, um. The concession was to shorten the lease thereby, um, uh, clearing the clear zone sooner than later. It also guarantees the payment to the city through making the city whole. Um, to repay the interfund loan. It also, um, allows the, the company to operate, um, more efficiently as they're currently operating. um more efficiently as they're currently operating and protect the jobs so that they can move out. So, and then also if they uh move out of Pierce County, they also, under this lease, this agreement, they would need to pay all of the funds to the city of Lakewood.
So if, if they were to find a new location outside of Pierce County or they were to find no location at all and just close their doors. Uh, they would have to pay us an additional eight thousand dollars for every month that they pay us ten thousand?
They would, they would have, no, this is a new, a new agreement whereby they would have to pay the full amount of ten thousand a month through the end of their contract regardless. So um but if they were to move out of Pierce County, they would still be obligated to pay the lease.
But only the ten thousand dollar lease?
Correct.
So this lease says ten thousand dollars with a rent waiver of eight thousand. And it says that the, that the person would lose the waiver and have to repay it. That's, is that not what the, in the, in the, 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 the base rent says? We, we're, we're not setting a new lease, we're, we're waiving eight thousand dollars of the eighteen thousand. So that he only has to pay ten thousand, but if he, if he fails to satisfy requirements, he'll lose the rent waiver.
That's correct.
And, and all the amounts previously waived will become due, so he would have to pay the eight thousand for all the months he paid ten thousand.
That's correct. Yes, Councilmember Brandstetter.
I guess he can sign that if he wants to, it isn't something I have. Isn't that, is, am I reading it right?
Yeah, that's what I read, but I've got some clarifying questions here. Are you good? The, the sections in the reference on paragraph two are a little out of whack, take a look at that, where it says base rent, paragraph two, waiver we're talking about, contingent on tenant satisfaction, the conditions set forth in section four below. Technically, section four below is a back simile, back simile signature section, I think you mean section three below. We need to make that change. And then there's another which paragraph three where it says in consideration for landlords grant and the monthly base rent waiver as described in section three above, which it surely should be section two above, right? A couple of nits there, so I had a couple of questions about other than those nits. So if, for example, we amend the lease terms through the end of twenty twenty five sufficient to repay the inter fund loan, that's the intent, right? We're amending this lease to extend the term through October twenty twenty five, at least to repay the inter fund loan, that's the key. The question is, if he moves. Yeah, if he moves in twenty twenty four, let's say that they're very successful uh consistent with the section three sub, little I high sub two, and they work with the landlord, the real estate agent, and they find a suitable place. And they move in August of twenty twenty four. Do they still pay rent through twenty twenty five, so we repay the inter fund loan or not?
That the terms of the contract would have him paying through twenty twenty five, there's what our objective is and there's what he's agreed to pay. And, and again, part of it goes to this question of what is the deal that's been struck at the core of it? And as the council's pointed out, there are some things about this deal that maybe look like, wow, this guy's getting uh desirable rent or what have you, but there are also some things in there for him that he may think are a lot to be giving us, especially if he's moved on.
I would just make sure it's clear in that section somewhere that notwithstanding tenants' successful move to a new location prior to January twenty twenty six, tenant acknowledges and agrees that the full rent shall be due and payable to the city through the stated lease term of whatever it is, October twenty twenty five. Because we gotta, we gotta recover that inter fund loan. And then the final question I had, not that it matters here, but it kind of goes to Mr. Brandstetter's question, so they pay, uh it's successfully completed, they've moved and we have a building that needs to be demoed, who's, who's on the hook to pay the demo cost of the building?
What I will tell you is that um the city manager usually tells us, you let me worry about the financing for those things and, and to be fair, one of the issues here is this is truly just the first step. There are all kinds of buildings out there, we might actually let it sit until we have a couple other buildings together. We may talk to the legislature about more money, as you know, we pursued both the feds and the state for money just to do some of these purchases in the clear zone. So I think um we would be speculating to tell you exactly how we're going to do that. But it's, it's a little premature at this point because we still don't even have the first person out of the property.
Very good. Just thought I'd ask, Mr. Anderson.
So if I look at this amendment modification, how do I tell we're on a month to month rental agreement now because it says it's reducing the term of the lease by a year? Which implies that there is a fixed term of the lease now. And it says, and if they have a thirty day right to get out, which maybe that's what the original lease says, they still would because it reaffirms everything else in the lease.
As a lease?
So I think that's really problematic from a drafting standpoint. I would, I would just start, if the other one's term effectively terminated because it's rent's course and they have an option to keep renting it for another three years, it'd just be better to terminate it and write at least as our terms in it instead of trying to shorthand it and leave something potential in it.
We understand the direction of the council and we will go through and make sure that we bring forward something that doesn't allow room for that kind of an out, I appreciate what you've said.
Mr. Larsa. Uh, following up on uh Mr. Anderson's initial comment about guarantees for the, if they were to default. Uh, is there also any way to incentivize, instead of just saying prefer that they relocate in Lakewood, but to have a little more teeth to that? That's out of Pierce County.
We, we could try to do that, the concern that I have is that um finding the right location for them, we could place them in an untenable position. And I know Ms. Newton is quite astute about what's available at any given time and what he's looking for. And um they both seem to be looking in earnest, but I, I fear setting him up if we did that. I, I do think he's interested in Lakewood if we can make it work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so the last item really should have been the first item, because it's a significant item, but let me ask counsel before we launch into this. Uh, this is the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four strategic plan update, it's fairly significant. And um we can start it, I'm not sure or confident that we might get through it all tonight because it might be deserving of some greater sort of clarity of thought before nine o'clock on an evening, Mr. Brandstetter.
Um, my, my preference would be to be able to take some quality time to, to go through it. Uh, and it's actually a pretty good document, as, as I've read it, uh to, to go through. But it, I think that there are some things that are between twenty twenty one, when we really last had a serious discussion uh about this. And now that there are maybe some priorities or some nuances we want to do strategically. So, you know, I'd rather take a, take this document, get a chance to really go through it and then have one more study session with it being kind of the, the premier item. Okay, before we bring it in, and I certainly wouldn't want it to be on a consent agenda next week.
Right. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I'd suggest that we give Mr. Vargas the uninterrupted opportunity to give his presentation and then we do what Mr. Brandstetter suggests. Come back where it's the feature item, where we have had a chance to formulate our questions and perhaps even give Mr. Vargas and, and colleagues
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Chance to know what those are before they come to the meeting.
Fair plan. Any other thoughts on that, is everyone fine with that? Mr. Vargas, giving you the chance to have your, your day in court, so to speak, and then we'll reserve cross-examination for a later date.
That sounds good with me, Mayor. Um, and just to give a bit more preface here, you know, we're not asking to sit down and sort of rework city council goals and whatnot, but really the strategic plan itself as a presentation of city council goals um is, you know, what, what the update is about. Um, you know, city council usually does set a retreat dedicated to formulating new goals for the next timeframe. But, but anyway, um yeah, happy to give my presentation here, so good evening, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, council members, Michael Vargas here to go over the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four strategic plan update. And I'm starting on page twenty five of your packet tonight. Um, so just to orient everyone in the world of strategic planning and city council goals, um to give a bit of background. The city council um adopted the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty city council goals and strategic plan um back in two thousand eighteen. Since then, the city council adopted the most recent twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four city council goals um in twenty twenty one. So both sets of these city council goals were produced via multiple city council goal setting retreats throughout the years that this body hosts regularly. Um, and as a follow-up to the adoption of the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four city council goals, a corresponding strategic plan was to be developed. However, due to competing priorities, development was delayed until recently and this resulted in the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four strategic plan before you all tonight. So just to give a uh brief overview of the structure of the strategic plan. Um, this strategic plan utilizes the same format as the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one. Namely, the strategic plan uh really tells a story of Lakewood um via providing an overview of the history of Lakewood, the promises of incorporation, uh Lakewood resident in business demographics, um as well as, of course, presenting the six city council goals along with corresponding objectives and strategies for each. Um, the strategic plan also delineates which city departments take the lead on implementation of those city council goals, objectives and strategies, as well as key highlights, narratives, data. It's really telling um stories of really major achievements within each of the city council goal areas uh which are economic development, dependable infrastructure, public safety, fiscal accountability, transparency, transparency and robust and active community. And I'd like to pause and just comment here on the overall um structure of the strategic plan. Because yes, we do have the usual nuts and bolts of what makes a strategic plan a strategic plan. Um, but I think that our strategic plan goes a little bit further, um because it's really a roadmap that provides a very high level view of the Lakewood community such that a Lakewood resident or stakeholder or someone even outside our community can really sit down, read through the plan and get a good sense of who we are as a community, where we have been, where we are today and where we are going. And that's all centered around the six city council goals, um which is the highlight of the document. Um, since we have individual sections showcasing uh the various highlights and, and achievements in each goal. For example, our economic development goal, um that cover page uh really promotes the story of economic development in the city. It has data such as the amount of private development um spurred in the city due to economic development efforts. Our dependable infrastructure goal uh really showcases the improvements in our infrastructure through the payment condition um index score, which has increased throughout the decades due to all the city's work in, in the area of dependable infrastructure. And our plan also goes a bit further because it sort of makes the connection between all the various supporting documents, quote unquote, that the city has, all of our plans and reports that capture department work towards a given goal, such as the comprehensive plan, our recently um passed non-motorized transportation plan, police reports, finance reports, and even newer plans such as the climate change work plan. Um, so really our strategic plan is centered around the fact that a resident can get a good sense of the governmental landscape here in the city and how departments work together to achieve city council goals. It is a public facing document, um you know, department, city um management have their own sort of internal documents for keeping all the work plan and all the, all those projects straight in the city. But this public facing strategic plan really invites the reader to explore all the other great documents that we produce and become more engaged in their local government in general. So that's where the philosophy behind the strategic plan. Um, but moving on back to the memo here, there have been some substantive updates to the plan, strategic plan, um which I'll list here, such as the promises of incorporation now reflect the original set of policy areas to include land use, public safety, fiscal responsibility and parks and recreation, you know, significant headway have, has been made in those areas. Um, a new human services section that communicates the city's long-held commitment to human services funding and partnerships over the years, which for the better part of a decade, more so that this city council body has dedicated one percent to of the general fund to funding human services partners in the city. Um, also a new diversity, equity and inclusion section that really sets the stage and tells a story of how the city is really officiating and embarking on the journey of DEI, uh such as the creation of the city's DEI strategic plan. And as you probably noticed, updated fonts, color and branding that aligns with the city of Lakewood's new brand guide, uh which is coming before the city council here in the coming months. Um, but that's really a good update in terms of, you know, professionalizing and bringing our, our branding up to industry standards. Um, and also updating the goals, objectives and strategy tables to now incorporate direct alignment with the city work plan. Which as you can imagine, the city work plan is a corresponding document which is about equal in length that takes all of the city departments, projects and initiatives and categorizes them by city council goal, objective and strategy. That is not included in the strategic plan, um but there is direct alignment between the two, so residents can sort of easily, you know, feel how everything is connected there. But to uh give a recommendation, uh the city council should have moved to adopt a new twenty three to twenty four strategic plan, which would bring their strategic plan in alignment with the current twenty one to twenty four city council goals. And some next steps that the city council uh may consider is that, well, we're end, we're ending, we're coming towards an end for the twenty one to twenty four city council goals. And there are a number of key factors that the city council may consider when embarking on the next process of adopting a new set of city council goals, um of course, from which a new strategic plan would be developed. And some key factors that this body may consider is a timeline of the next city council goals, which may align with the next biennium, twenty five to twenty six, or next two biennia, twenty five to twenty eight, or something different entirely. Um, scheduling of a city council retreat and follow-up retreats in, in quarter one of, of twenty twenty four to embark on creating next city council goals. And finally, how to sort of integrate this upcoming um development of city council goals with other long-term goal-setting initiatives that the city council has embarked on, such as the council vision twenty twenty six and possible um collab, integration of, of those two processes um moving forward. But yeah, that was my presentation, um happy to go, many comments or questions by the council at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas, you know, again, I think all of us read through it over the weekend and certainly it's a well-done report, we may have some, some thoughts and comments as we go through it. And I'll open it up if anyone has any specific comments now before we defer to another study session for final thought. Well, very good, well. You've wowed us with the, the new branding, Mr. Vargas. Thank you and the data. So. No, I appreciate it. Good report. We're gonna work with Mr. Coffield on another. Study session evening that we can bring you back and we can kind of go, go through some of the fine points here and. In, in final shape. There are just a few little nits here and there that I saw that I wanted to. Point out, but those are mostly just minor, minor tweaks, but the policy stuff we can chew on as well.
Anderson, Mayor, yep.
Questions, comments? I'm sure Mr. Coffield, you can find a spot for us on a study session sometime this summer. Very good. Okay. Well, thank you, sir, for coming tonight. Good to see you.
Thank you, thank you.
So those were the items for discussion for this evening's study session agenda. You can see those items tentatively scheduled for the July third regular city council meeting. As indicated, and with that, we'll turn to reports by the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members. Just a few updates this evening. The first is. Late on Friday. And create a little bit of panic here, here in the city. We received notification that. The mayor of Belong, by Union Philippines, one of our sister cities, was going to be visiting. The Pacific Northwest on July tenth and eleventh and had requested. An opportunity to meet with the mayor as, as part of his visit. However, scheduling is not, is not going to allow that. The latest update that we have is that Councilmember Anderson is going to be able to. Schedule an opportunity for him to go golfing with the mayor because I know they have a longstanding relationship. From a previous visit that Councilmember Anderson had when he was the mayor to the Philippines. And as a part of that, we would invite the council under the leadership of the deputy mayor, deputy mayor Moss, to facilitate, you know, some kind of a brief meet and greet. Because he'll be heading south on his way to Portland and that would occur in the morning of July eleven. So. That's kind of where we are right now. And so the city clerk and I and others will work out the. Technical, actually, no, I won't. The city clerk and others will work out the technical details because I too will be gone. On that, but our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus, will be the acting city manager, so she'll be able to stand in for me as, 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 as well. You remember last week I reported that. DSHS, as it relates to historic Fort Stillicum. Would be interested in having a discussion about transferring the ownership of. The buildings that make up historic Fort Stillicum. To the city and that would allow us to actually kind of get a proverbial foot in the door as well as be able to. You know, make some improvements to those buildings and work in partnership. More closely with the Historic Fort Stillicum Association. Late last week, we did hear back from the association through their board president. And he wanted to communicate on behalf of the board that they would actually support that. And they view that as kind of the first step. In having that property become part of the city at some time in the future. So I just wanted to share that with the council. Also, we have received five applications for your independent salary commission. And so those applicants are being recommended by Mayor Waylon, Waylon, which is commensurate with your. Code and they will be coming forward for city council confirmation as part of your July seventeenth. Excuse me, regular meeting. Thank you. And as. And then that will kick off the forty-five day review window, which is pursuant to Washington state law for them to get their work done. If you ask the question. Why July seventeenth? Why not next week on July third? And the reason being is because the person on my staff who is going to be leading that. Is on vacation and so she won't be back until July eighteenth, actually. And so to ensure that there's the full forty-five days that are available, a recommendation is for the council to consider the mayor's. The mayor's appointees on, on the seventeenth of July. And then if you're driving around the city, our, our public works engineering department has been. Contracting with Pierce County Public Works for striping, and so about sixty percent of the city will get. A fresh look and some striping and. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then as it relates to other upcoming events, of course, the farmer's market continues tomorrow and then also. The summer concerts continue tomorrow evening as well down at Fort Stillicum Park. Summer Fest on July fifteenth and also on July fifteenth and sixteenth, JBLM will be having their airshow and Warrior Expo. Featuring the, the Thunderbirds from the Air Force side. And then again, on July twenty-seventh, groundbreaking of Fort Stillicum Park turf fields. Improvement partner, improvement project in partnership with Pierce, Pierce College. Unfortunately, at this point in time. Looks like our legislators from the twenty-eighth district may not be able to meet us, meet, be. Be a part of that because of prior commitments, but if their schedule is free up. They'll certainly be able, they'll, they'll, they'll be able to come out. So with that, that's my report this evening.
Any questions of Mr. Coffield? Mr. Bransdeter.
Yeah, Mr. Coffield, you sent us an email this week about the. The oak tree that we're going to remove in order to facilitate the ADA access at American Lake Parks. And you noted that. The date of the permit didn't really require us to do any mitigation either in terms of dollars or trees. And so, you know, I expect, I, I, I accept that, 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 that all the, that efforts were made to not have to remove the tree, but whether we have to do it. But I think that given. That we're in the. Rust of starting an urban forestry program and that. Maybe we made an arbitrary date that we decided about not having to do something. I think we would set a better impression and even an example to. To others in the city that might remove a tree, but not technically have to provide any sort of mitigation to do something. And, and whether it would be. To acquire a few trees and plant them and note that, 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 that. That's what they are or, or, or. Place some money in the tree fund or something to be able to go and do that. I think the image of doing that. When we don't have to is, I think would be helpful.
So Councilmember Bransdeter, I would add, if that's something that the council would do, I would need some direction or consensus from the council, either. This evening, or if you wanted to do it officially as part of a motion at a regular. At a regular meeting. My recommendation, if that's what you want to do, would be to contribute to the tree fund. Because we're already planting, I think it's thirteen trees down on site as part of the project itself, so there's really no more room. To plant more trees down there. So again, my recommendation would be a nine thousand dollar contribution to the, to the tree fund.
And in response to Mr. Laura Sella's question earlier is. It's unfortunate, but it sounds like that's the only option is to remove that tree. There's no other way to work around it.
So Bear Waylon, we have looked at all kinds of options and, you know, unfortunately or fortunately. It's, it's because of the ADA requirements in terms of how those slopes. Must be as it relates to federal ADA requirements, but we looked at it from left to right, top to bottom. Turn things around, turn things over and that tree is just simply in the way. The only other option would be to not do the improvements. That's, that's, that's correct, Councilmember Bokey, and that's the challenge that we're, that we're facing.
Okay, any other comments on that? How about direction? I mean, it's one of those things where you're taking from one pot and. Putting into another when you're talking general fund money.
Well, it would, that, that's correct, Mayor. Actually, it would be a project cost.
Oh, it would be part of the project cost. Okay.
That's correct.
That's better. We have consensus on that? I don't disagree with Mr. Bransdeter on the, the appearance. Okay, so you have consensus. Yep, Mr. Laura Sella.
I, I concur with what Mr. Bransdeter said. If there is no other possible way that we can. Ontour around that tree and maintain the right slopes per ADA guidelines that. The least we can do is. Submit funds that would be associated with a permit if a citizen were to bring forward a similar project. I think it's to show a good faith to our community that we're doing everything we can.
Mr. Bokey.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, but. The grant itself, a big portion of the grant was to do the CBA. Oh, it's a major part of the project.
Yes, Councilmember Bokey, this is an ADA improvement project. I mean, that's, that's the crux of it. That's good.
And to add historical context to this. Liter- literally within the week prior to transferring. That property to the city, Pierce County signed a long term. Virtually dollar a year lease. To the rowing club. And place their facility in an unfortunate location that really limits our flexibility in designing that park. It's, it's just plopped down. It's not where you would put it if you were planning the whole park.
We're just looking at the diagram a little bit over here. One wonders if you could do concentric circles as opposed to straight sort of parallel lines. Try to get around the tree. I don't know. We're not engineers, but actually, he's an engineer. I'm not.
I actually, yeah, we've, we've looked at all of those issues and under eight, yeah. Under ADA requirements, we're required to start at the, the top and measure down to the bottom.
Yeah, I know the ADA grant piece, that's the tough part. Now, maybe they can plant something appropriate, you know. Something relatively mature for that amount of money and get something that'll work for shade or whatever there. Yeah, all right, very good. Anything else for Mr. Coffield? Okay, let's turn to council comments briefly. How about Mr. Bokey?
Shade Board approved their budget. They will be sending. Out to all the, so there's an eight and a half percent increase from last year. And it's for next year, actually, the twenty twenty-four budget, eight and a half percent increase in dues. So there's around about twenty-five thousand dollars. They'll be sending the information to the city staff. I think Miss Spear was also on the call. To the lefties, there will be going from one point five to two. It's that thing.
Councilmember Bransdeter.
Well, I did spend the majority of last week at the AWC conference in Spokane. Like most conferences, it had. Things that I were glad were there and then I learned, learned some things. I, I think that, though, my, my one particular impression. That maybe illustrates more how. We need to take some initiative to get some cities and things together. Is that in all of the breakout sessions and everything that they have, they had. Things about housing and they had things about transportation and they had things about equity to do that. And there were virtually, there, there were no sessions about around public safety and law enforcement. About strategies for city to. The new reality that the legislature has created and how to advocate for. Going forward. So I think that that is. It is something that we're going to have to do with at least our. Closer regional partners and I saw that the way the mayor sent them a letter to try to begin that process. But then, but the emphasis is, is that if you're trying to influence the, the legislature to do that. Now, this is, this is one of those things that we really need to start early with the entire Pierce County delegation. To, 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 to let them know that they. Only took half steps this past legislative session. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I too attended the Association of Washington Cities Conference last week in Spokane. And I thought it was a really good event, a really good conference for networking. There was definitely some sessions that I thought were more beneficial than the others. And I just tried to take away different ways that Lakewood could get involved, whether it's serving on different boards. Or getting differently, getting more involved with the AWC as itself is a really great resource. So I took a lot away from that. And then I also wanted to thank the Lakewood Water District for the meeting today and learning a lot about. What's going on with them and what we can do to help support that equally back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things. Had the opportunity to go to the farmer's market last week. It was really great, right before our. Our session here in. We had lots of folks turn out. Speaking of that, I took time to. Go back and listen to the YouTube video of all the comments and all the feedback we got and. Just really excited about the passion of our citizens. And we hear their concerns about safety in our parks and as we are making improvements. And I talked to the city manager about that and he pointed out that. As we make improvements to the parks and they get more people to go to them, maintenance actually goes down because they're taken care of better by the folks who go there. And I, I appreciate that. I also attended the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting last week and they talked about a number of things, including. An update to the Lakewood Tourism Map, which we should be seeing at some point here in the future. They also discussed. Ownership of a couple of other cemeteries in Lakewood. In addition to the Old Settler Cemetery that we're acquiring. There's also the Masonic Cemetery and there's another cemetery at Western State Hospital. And there are questions about whether those could be potential things that we as a city could be stewards of. And finally, there was a discussion about. As the Fort Stillicum Park ballfields get under construction, if there's an opportunity to. Preserve any artifacts that are discovered in that process. So that was encouraging. Let's see. I attended a ribbon cutting on behalf of council for. The Windermere Abode Realty. Which was great. Had a great turnout, lots of people there and just really inviting and welcoming to everybody. So I appreciate. They're on gravelly across from the town center. Had a chance to talk diversity, equity and inclusion, which I know all of us are going to get to talk to, if we haven't yet, with some individuals for the city. And that was a really good discussion to share the experiences I have, but also understand where others are coming from. And yeah, I appreciate Lakewood Water District coming out as well. It was great to learn more of the history and where things are being focused. To maintain low rates, but also make sure that everyone gets what they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Anderson.
Last leg of my travels last couple of weeks was. To Washington DC where I attended. ADC Board Meeting, Meetings and AC Connect Session on. Siphysis. Cepius, which is an acronym that, don't ask me to explain, but it's of federal legislation requiring. Potential divestment of assets. That are purchased by foreign governments. Basically, it's. The, the prime interest now is a heightened concern regarding foreign government controlled entities buying property near military bases. And creating listing posts of. Maybe they, there are still a windmill company, an energy company and they. Incorporate technology, which is also listening devices like. And there is, and it's very clear that there's an inability on the part of the federal government to adequately monitor it. So they're more and more looking to state, local county governments to assist. It goes to stock and entities to, to be compliant. For the most part, it appears that it's honest. Legitimate businesses complying with the law, where there's a lot of red tape that could be easily circumvented by any bad actor. So, but but there is a focus when they identify it. So there'll be more to come with that. But it's it's something that's of heightened interest, and we're here where. You know, you can look at the C seventeen's from Stanaway Loop Road, so. It's obviously a concern. As part of that, our board had an hour and a half meeting, was scheduled for an hour with. Assistant Secretary of Defense for Energy Installations and Environment Brendan Owens. Who I had met previously. And he's a fast study. He is an energy geek by trade. He was number two at the Green Building Council for. At the end of his seventeen-year tenure there. But he's lasering in on housing. We had a long discussion. It's very apparent that one size doesn't fit all. When they talk about raising BAH and the housing allowance. In some locations, if you're in North Dakota or certain parts of more rural Florida. That drives the rental market, so they don't necessarily want that allowance raised because it raises the rent for everybody in town. Here, it wouldn't cause a blip in the cost. So they're going to have to be a little more innovative, and part of that suggested, which you kind of took the hardest, their their. Surveys are. Poorly. Instructed and untimely. Where real estate agents and. Places, things like Zillow can peg the and rent dot com can tell you what rents are going to be. In near real time. So they've got to, they've got to adapt to technology, which is something they look like they're working on. But it's one of the things that's lasered in on housing. On a lighter note. The. I I went out to, and it's it's a place support Stillicum. Park, I. I went out to walk early in the morning. Get some exercise, got a couple of miles from my hotel. Started to rain pretty hard. First thing that was near and open was the American History Museum, Sot Refuge. And. They had Philip Sheridan, who is the. Little Phil was a captain out here at Fort Stillicum before the war. They have his horse there. Like this is a. Stuffed horse. It's Philip. He was the most successful cavalry, Union Cavalry Officer in world, in in. In Civil War, and so they preserved his famous horse that he had after the war, and it was somewhere else till eighteen eighty. Since then, it's been the custody of this facility, so with his saddle with three stars on it. But no, I thought Roy Rogers' horse was strange, but anyway, so. I saw Phil Sheridan's horse. Wondered if he had it here in Lakewood before he went back east to fight in the Civil War. That's my report, and I'm sticking to it.
We probably stuffed it.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I too attended the AWC conference, and I followed the. Students that were the recipients of the AWC scholarship. And I was very impressed with all of them. Brandon shone like a new penny. He was awesome. And in the breakout section I attended, the conversation with the students were the fact that. Adults comment on their on their phone constantly, and their explanation is during COVID. The phone was that friend. So they are attached to that phone, and we need to. Look at it differently than what we are looking at, the way we see it. Because to take that phone away from them is taking away part of their connection in their mind. So that was very interesting. I was I was listening to them intensely because we do. Look at them and think they they can't have a conversation openly because they're doing this for three years. That's what they did. So just wanted to share that, just to keep that in mind when we talk to our students. I too had my scholarship, my scholarship, DEI interview. That was really interesting. In fact, had a lot of in common with the gentleman. He had to talk about years in the past, and that was really, really good, really good. A lot of interest there and saying. Also at AWC, I attended the affordable housing, and they too are having a terrible time trying to describe. Or identify affordable housing. So we are struggling with that concept, but we're not alone. Thank you.
Thank you. I will echo my attendance at AWC. The conference was well done. It was good to meet other. Electeds and leadership in other jurisdictions to talk about common areas where we have. Challenges, but also learn best practices and what they're doing perhaps differently that we can learn from. So that's the value of those conferences. I also enjoyed doing the presentation with and for Brandon Elliott. He was not just the scholarship recipient at AWC, one of the eleven or eight kids, I think, that received a twenty-five dollar scholarship. But also, he was featured as the recipient of the Presidential Scholarship from the University of Washington. And the gentleman who's responsible for the endowment came and discussed. The purpose of the endowment and really highlighted Brandon and out of two hundred and, what is it, fifty-one cities and towns in the state of Washington. There was one University of Washington Scholarship recipient, Presidential Scholarship recipient. And that was Brandon Elliott from the great city of Lakewood. So it was a neat, neat thing to highlight, and Lakewood was certainly in the house. With Brandon, so it was it was a nice event. I will also echo comments about the Lakewood Water District meeting today. Thank you, Mr. Caulfield, for putting that together. I think those kinds of meetings are important, they're relationship building. And certainly, we understand the issues between the two entities much better by having conversations. So those are good to do periodically. I hope we get to do that again in the next year. Let's see, the concert in the park is tomorrow. Don't forget to go out there. That's the open of the concert series right after the farmer's market. So we want to try to support those folks and our city staff for putting that together. Should be great weather if you get a chance to go out there. It'll be a nice event. And then finally, I'm just apologizing for not being. As clear in my comments on Zoom last week when it came to the Edgewater Park issues. It was really challenging with the. The Zoom connection in our hotel. The hotel apologized. Nonetheless. One of the things I did learn at the AWC conference, it really, I didn't learn it, but it was drilled into us, was. Local government is really where we build trust and relationship with our residents. It's much more of a one-on-one. Opportunity to build trust than is perhaps a position at the federal government or somewhere else. And in line with that, I think that the comments we all heard, you know, really ring true. If we're going to have an amenity. We need to maintain it. If we're going to have an amenity that's open for public use, it needs to be safe and clean. And so to the extent we heard those comments and. We want to build trust, I think we need to follow up with that. And then do as much as we can with that process to stay on top of it so that we. If there is going to ultimately be some take back of some city property, we take what we need and no more. That's the way we build trust. Okay, any other comments? We're adjourned. Oh, Mr. Anderson.
I don't understand why you say take we need and no more.
Well, it's the process we start. It may end up with a negotiated resolution, and so we don't know yet. Everything's going to be about it, but. We're just open to it. And it may be end up being a whole beast, but we certainly want the city's property back. Yes, ma'am.
Some of the comments that I.
Well, it was hard to visualize everything on Zoom the other night for sure, and hard to hear all the comments because of the in and out. But yeah, we've made our decision, obviously.
Yes, some of the comments that I've heard from public that were not here but listened to the video are. They don't have the right concept, so I think with us having some more dialogue openly with this. Could help curb some of their confusion that's out there, because their impression was the city's taking people's property.
Right, I heard that too the week prior, and you know, Iwendo flows rampantly around the city. And we tried to correct the misapprehensions that night. But I think we've also heard staff's going to be doing a better job of communicating the master plan for the park. So hopefully that will come out to the website so people can realize what the plan is. And there was a good comment made by one or more of you that. It's hard to provide a full reflection of what the plan is until you know what turf you have to work with. So that's part and parcel of it too, so. More to follow on that. I think we just have to, and it's tough because you're dealing with a piece of litigation, so you can't be as open as you'd like to be. You gotta be as open as you can be. We just have to be as transparent as we can be. Okay, all right, we're adjourned.